Okay, it is 5:01, so I will call the North Kingstown School Committee Budget Working Session to order. On the agenda, before we start, I'll just read the part at the top about a working session. So it says, "As stated in policy, EE work session meetings may be convened by the committee when necessary to hold discussion and allow for public input on any issue before the committee." And please join me in the pledge, please. Rochelle?
Erin Earl?
Here.
Robert Case?
Here.
Jennifer Limo?
Here.
Megan Riley?
Here.
Sherri Kennedy?
Here.
Joshua Portado?
Here.
Joshua Bush. And then the first item on the agenda is just the guidelines of a working session, so I won't read those out loud, but they do outline that the chairperson will recognize any individual wishing to speak, and that that will be limited to five minutes. And then it goes on to kind of just explain the rules of a working session, which are slightly different than our business meetings. The next item on our agenda is citizens comments. Do we have anyone signed up for citizens comments?
We don't.
Okay. And so we will move on to presentations. And the first one will be the review of the FY 2026 budget process.
Okay, so everyone has the slides that we're going to review. You have the budget along with the narrative. This is also online for any members of the public. Slides were put up along with the tabs. The agenda was the budget document as well. So we will begin. First, I just want to thank Leslie and Powell for preparing the budget for this year. As some of you saw at the document you see, they do look different from the past. She did set it up in a different format, which I think is, will be easier to read, and I also think for transparency, just to be able to go through it, to see kind of top level and go through the departments of what's there. So I just want to thank her for putting it together and getting this off on a good start.
Can you just, before we get into it, can you just clarify where it is on the website?
Yes. Chaz?
Right now, it's going to be right under the North Kingstown School Committee page, under the other resources.
Okay, so North Kingstown School Committee, and then other resources.
It's not there yet, it will be probably in the next couple of minutes. It's been a little slower to cache, but we'll get that.
That's okay. All right, thank you for that. And then, as Dr. Duba said, you can find it on the attachments as well.
So what we'll do first, we have some slides that we prepared for you. We'll go through the slides, and then we will then go over the actual budget document, and we'll go through each category page by page. As we go through the slide deck, if you can just kind of hold your questions, what we'll do is kind of do it in part two. I'll do the first section, and if there's any questions regarding that, that's pretty much going on the budget process, budget goals. And then Leslie will go over the budget slides. If you can just kind of hold the questions to the end, and then we'll go into the budget document. So this is the FY, so fiscal year 2026 budget presentation for the school committee. Today is January 28th. So this is just an overview of our budget process. I am not going to go over each bullet that's here. I've presented this before in the past, it's really here for the public, so they see that. But basically, we start the budget process in November, start building the budget with our administrators at the school level. Each school and department brings the budget to Leslie and I. We review that budget, and then we put together the superintendent's budget, which is presented to all of you tonight. The budget document that we prepare is focused on looking at current year FY '25, what we've been doing in the schools across the district, and then goals for next year, which are then aligned to our district's teaching plan. These next few slides go through areas that we are continuing to work on for goals in the district plan, as well as would be supported through our school department budget. So the first goal that we have, actually, this is goal one and two in a district's strategic plan, it's improving student achievement and closing gaps. We are continuing to focus on high-quality curriculum in our schools. We are going to pilot a new science curriculum in grade five for next year. We are going to continue implementation of the science curriculum at the middle school level, which was started this year as a pilot. And then at the elementary level, continuing with the high-quality curriculum that was put in a few years ago, Bridges Math, Wit and Wisdom for the ELA, Gems Net for Science. At the middle school level, Envisions for Math and the L curriculum for the ELA. And as I said earlier, the piloted science curriculum has been adopted for next year. At the high school, we will be purchasing new textbooks for the history department. We are expanding Branching Minds. Branching Minds is a program that we started this year at the elementary level for MTSS. MTSS is Multi-Tier Systems of Supports. This is a program that helps us collect data and put action plans together for our students. We got started at the elementary, we are moving that to the middle school for next year. We will also continue with the current interventionists that we have at the elementary and middle school to support our students, to support closing gaps in the areas of ELA and math. We're also going to focus on school data teams. So this way, at each school level, we have school data teams that are looking at the student data and making decisions, decisions based on best practices and next steps for instruction, and closing student achievement gaps. We're continuing after-school homework club and supports, continuing late buses for after-school at the elementary through high school level. For the vision of the graduate, that is being, the term is just being changed, the vision of a learner, that was something that was agreed upon by the group that's working on that right now. They're continuing the work this year, and then into next year for creating grade-span learner progressions that will be implemented in the schools at each grade level. This way, we have that in place, so teachers know what those expectations are at each grade level, and there'll be a continuum from preschool, like preschool through 12th grade.
Yeah, if I could, a couple of things just to add to context here as well. The science curriculum at the middle school is being fully implemented this year as a new science curriculum. At the middle school level, it was greenlit at the middle school level, which is why it's implemented there. And that's going to continue next year. That's been a significant shift in a positive way in terms of the approach and the direction in science, and our teachers, we were just there today, working with them on the new curriculum. It's really exciting, and they're doing a great job with it. So we're looking forward to that, continuing it. And then also, I just want to add, with regard to the, Dr. Duba's mention of the data teams and the multi-tiered systems and supports, that's a very, we are again looking to move forward comprehensively with this system as a system that's used to look at data from both a wide lens and a narrow lens. And so we're looking at it as a way to look at what, you know, our tier-one instruction, our core instruction to all students, and where we are, where our strengths are and where our needs are, but then also looking more narrowly at students who are struggling to meet with the goals that are being set, and how we can provide those targeted interventions, targeted plans to really address students, meet them where they are, address their needs, to have them make that progress from year to year in regards to that. So I just want to add a little context to that. And Dr. Duba also mentioned the vision of the learner, which continues its work. We are making some really good progress with that. We are looking at defining our district-wide essential skills that we are looking for all students to be able to practice through their education in North Kingstown, that are skills that transcend content and transcend grade level, and are really college and career readiness skills that they will use with them far beyond their schooling years. And so we're looking to advance that process. We're looking to also define how students display these skills at different grade levels, so how it looks K to 2, how it looks 3 to 5, and so on and so forth. And that's really exciting, because that's very much like student-facing in terms of the work that they'll do, and the type of tasks they'll be asked to do and demonstrate.
Thank you. For professional, areas of professional development related to student achievement and closing gaps, there'll be a focus on secondary math instruction and best practices, something we started this year and continuing into next year. Implementing a science coach at the middle school through our Gems Net contract, and funding through Title II, that's to help the implementation of the new curriculum. It's not a full-time science coach position, but it'd be a partial position that will be supported through Gems Net. Continuation of the multi-language learner coach that was started this year, and also to continue with the literacy coach, and that was through the Comprehensive Literacy State Development, the CLSD grant. The next goal area is under Safe and Supportive Schools. Oh, this slide is there. We are recommending purchasing security cameras for transportation to put on all of our school buses. We're also recommending to move forward in implementing a visitor badge management system at all of our schools. For SEL, expanding on curriculum at the middle school, suicide prevention curriculum for middle school and high school, equity and wellness professional development, hiring talented enthusiastic staff who will engage students and support the goals of the district, and our Employee Assistance Plan Benefits Program. Next goal is on school facilities. We are recommending transitioning the Davisville Academy 3.5, that's the Positive Pathways Elementary Program, to Fishing Cove, where the current 1-2 program is. And we are also recommending transitioning the district preschool from Fishing Cove to Davisville Academy. There's five classrooms that we would move to Davisville, but also will provide us the opportunity to expand the preschool in the future with additional classroom space that we have at that school. We have a plan for a five-year fleet upgrade for facilities, that's not separate, not the transportation fleet, but the vehicle fleet within facilities. The purchasing of a scissor lift, continuing with the Stage 2, Stage 3 ride necessity of construction application process. That all aligns with our school bond, the build of the liquid middle school, and the capital improvements across the district. Student Chromebook refurbishment, we have a cycle, so every year we are purchasing student Chromebooks for the next level of students that move from elementary to middle school. Upgrades of servers in the district. We are going to improve the reliability and consistency of access of technology-related resources across the district. And we're also going to increase our cybersecurity posturing to protect staff and student information. Part of this, you know, is a requirement through the trust that we have to have in place. So those are some of the goals that we're working on that's reflected through the budget. The next slides are on student projections. We did, I did present on this last time, so I just wanted to include this slide in case there's any questions or reference. The next one is on charter schools, charter student projections. So we are anticipating an increase, does this have a...
My head might be on the table.
So that little gray rectangle at the bottom, that shows what we're anticipating as an increase for students attending charter school. So we're expecting an increase from 100 students from this current year to 114 for next year. That number is different from the last time we presented this with the preliminary budget presentation for town council. We did not have the number of students that would go into the Green School. Those students are now accounted for, that was another seven students at the high school level. We don't have the exact grade, so what we did do, and it threw numbers off a little bit, if you look at 9th grade, it looks like there's a big jump. We just put the seven students going to the Green School in 9th grade. We will find out exactly what grade they go to. So when you look and say, "Why is there a big jump in 9th grade?", it's just that the Green Charter is a high school-level charter school. We're unsure of what grade, we didn't have that data at our fingertips today, but we will tell you later exactly what grade. But it does represent the high school when you look at the number of students that we have going, 14, 9th grade, 5, 10th, 2nd, 11th, and 12th grade.
And if I can just interject, the correct number, since we did receive this, and extra students, that is accounted for in the budget, so it isn't there.
These next slides get specifically into the budget. Any questions on those slides that we went over?
Kind of the moment we've all been waiting for. Reach yourself. You know what? Can you look? Just as I can, because it's of course very tiny, I can't see behind me. Okay, so the first thing I want to do, again, is just point out, obviously, that the document that we have that we're going to talk about later is still a working document. What I've highlighted here is post-budget and finance committee meeting, and some discussion items that we had, additional meetings with the superintendent, to arrive at this first draft. So what you can see is, in terms of state aid, we did get a reduction right now of state aid, so we're reduced by $32,337. That came mostly in the area of high-cost special ed. These numbers will change. We will get the final numbers when the budget is approved, so we'll get new numbers again at the end of March, and then we'll get the final numbers at the end of June. So just know that that is in flux, and it can go up or down. We really don't have any true way of knowing that.
Leslie, what was that? The number on the very left is 13, is it 049?
Which...
See on the budget for FY '25, it's missing a digit.
Oh, yeah, 13. Yes, it's probably 059, but I will tell you exactly.
No worries, I just want, sometimes mine like drops, like when it's in Excel.
It probably did. It would be great if I could actually find it.
No rush, as long as we know that, we know that.
I did not.
Actually, we could do the math backwards.
You do the math by decrease.
It's got to be 490, right?
No, you know what? It's 494. It's 494. I actually have that number now that's ingrained in my brain. So it's 13, 494, 792.
494, yeah, you're right.
494.
Thank you.
And I'm going to save the town appropriation piece and do the additional revenue first. So the additional revenue, this is obviously anticipated. This is based off of, largely on what we saw with the audited numbers.
Chaz, I updated the slide, I don't know if you can refresh it. It'll show.
It's good to know that Powell doesn't recognize those as numbers. So we have, the audit is finally completed, so the numbers that I used here are based largely on what we actually saw for revenue in fiscal year '24, where we are right now for '25, and just based on some preliminary things I did, for example, like with investment earnings, that's how I arrived. Obviously, these are, these can also be in flux, depending on what comes in and out for CTE students that we have coming in, so that's tuition from other LEAs. The investment earnings can change based on our interest rate, obviously. In terms of Medicaid, indirect costs, rental income, those are all things that should remain fairly consistent.
Thank you.
So we're, I can, I'm fairly confident in those numbers. The one thing you will see at the top of the page is the reappropriation of fund balance. I will address that in a later slide, but it is important to note that I have included that in here. And then with those numbers, so we see an increase of about $1 million in revenue from the prior year, or the prior year budget, and that has certainly helped in what we could anticipate for an ask for town appropriation, which right now, based on the budget as you're seeing it, we're looking at an ask of roughly $63,925.5, which would be an overall increase of $2,512, $512, $506. And that equates to roughly, right now, 4.1% in an increase from the prior year. So we've got some work to do. So as I mentioned, you'll see we have about $1 million in additional revenue that we're accounting for in this budget, and so I just wanted to pinpoint what those are. So we did have a net positive change in our fund balance, so we, the audit was presented last night, so overall, the district is going to see about $987,000 carried over into our fund balance, which was why I made the recommendation to reappropriate some of those funds back into the budget this year for some of the larger projects that we'll need to take on. I do anticipate an increase in the number of CTE students attending our high school from other LEAs. We have had communications with the program directors at the high school, and we saw an increase from '24 to '25, and we are anticipating approximately five additional students from '25 to '26. So that enrollment, even if we kept the enrollment at 130, we're going to see an increase in revenue from what we budgeted last year. But I did increase it to the 135 to account for that newest information. And then additionally, we can anticipate that those tuition rates that we receive will go up each year. It has ranged. I went back to 2022 and took and looked at kind of like the average, and it was about 1.25%, so I conservatively went with 1%, but we know the rate will increase, so that's a safe bet to put in there. And then finally, the investment earnings. So we've gone back and forth with this a few times. We did bring it up in our budget and finance meeting, and we had originally discussed keeping it at 280,000, which was what we had in the budget for fiscal year '25. But I was asked during that meeting to go back and do a little bit of a financial analysis on what we could expect, which I did do. And based on where we're sitting right now in fiscal year '25, year-to-date, what the interest rate is, and what we're consistently seeing each quarter, I feel confident that we can raise that, and we can meet that, which will certainly help in some of the financial needs we have.
I have a question about the CTE student number.
I have a question about the CTE student number. When is that number locked in? So for instance, we'll know, okay, we're definitely getting the five extra.
It doesn't actually ever lock in because students can come in or out of the program at any point.
I would say by late spring, it's a much more, I would say a more confident number, because by that point, the students have been accepted.
Right.
Right now, they're still looking at students that are, that have registered, and then we would know by late spring, a firmer, firm number of who's actually coming. But even over the summer, kids can say, you know, I was planning on going to the CTE program, but I'm not anymore, I'm gonna stay in my home school.
So is that, to kind of go off of Megan's question, so it looks like, I was just looking to see when the application deadline was, and it looks like it was in December of twenty-twenty-four, so this is based on like what we kind of know.
This is what we know as of now.
As of now. And.
So it's, as solid as a number of students could be, like, you know, like they know how many apps they've gotten.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we're not confident, and the number, I'm just saying, that's, that's what we know right now of what students are coming in. And it's current students that are with us now that are not NK residents that mostly will be continuing. It's the new students that are registering that could change their mind muscle.
Thank you.
And I, I do think that when we get closer to April, that number starts to get a little bit more.
And it typically doesn't change too much.
Well, April's also the deadline when students would have to decide if they wanted to go to a private school as well, that's usually when they have to make that decision. So a lot of the drop that you get for a CTE program is a student deciding that they want to go into a private school as opposed to the CTE program. So that, you have with one little wave that happens in April, and then again at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I am, I know you said hold questions to the end for everything else, so I'm gonna move on to the expenditure portion. So the revenue is pretty straightforward, but obviously, we can discuss it in further detail when we get to the line-by-line. So in terms of expenditures as a whole, we are anticipating an increase of three million, two-seventy-seven by fifty-two, and that is broken up into two buckets. We have our salary and our benefits, which is one million, an increase of one million eight ninety-four five oh eight, and then your general operating expenses, and I detail what the difference is on some additional slides. So key drivers, very high level, the things that are paying three million dollars are, we have a potential for an increase in employee benefits. We know it's gonna happen, it's just a matter of what percent that's gonna come in at. We have multiple contracts that have rate increases that are built in them, not just on salaries, but also on some of our purchase service contracts. So whether it be with different sub-organizations that we use, or some of the things that we use for maintenance, our custodial contract, things like that. We, we all know inflation right now is going crazy. Our utilities, our supplies and materials are significantly higher than you would typically see year-over-year, so we've accounted for that. We have absolute necessity in certain technology capital that we have to do, and then we have curriculum purchases that we've already talked about as part of our district goals. So I have a little pie chart, and this is, this is giving you an idea of how things are done in the world of UCOA. So when we're looking at the uniform chart of accounts, everything is broken up into these eight different buckets, and this will just, it's a great way to represent just how much of our budget is taken up by salaries and benefits. You can see well over seventy percent of our budget is going to our employees. The next largest area are those purchase services that I was just mentioning, where we have all of those contracts, and then transportation, and then once you get there, you get, the percentage is very, very small. But when we're talking about those different salary and benefit increases that we have, they have a major impact on our overall budget, and we have several of those happening within this budget cycle. So with that, we will talk about those salary and benefits. So we have, we're looking at, for salaries, about a one-point-three-million-dollar increase, and that is our typical step increases that we will have no matter what. We have a three percent contractual increase for our teachers, and we are currently in negotiations with our non-certified staff. In addition, the administrative staff follows the same percentage as the teachers, so we'll have a three percent increase on that as well. The key variances that you're gonna see is that we did have some additional positions that were school committee approved, that happened in twenty-twenty-five, those are gonna roll to twenty-twenty-six. We are now reintroducing ESY and summer school costs back into our budget that have been previously covered by Essar, so that is definitely a large expense that had been supplanted that now is coming back. And one efficiency that we had was that we did eliminate the COO position, and we were able to allocate that to some other positions.
For that ES, ESY and summer school costs, like in this particular bucket, when we're talking about salaries, are we talking about stipends for folks that worked, or teachers that?
So we have stipends, we have, so we have coordinator stipends, there are hourly employees, there's salaries, there's some nursing staff, I believe, that's in there, so it's a variety of things that.
It's mostly hourly wages.
And all of that came out of Essar last year.
So the, with the way it was broken out, to my understanding, is that we had our normal hourly rate that we pay them, and then a portion of that went to Essar, a portion was charged to Essar, and a portion was charged to the general fund. So the part that was in Essar is now coming back.
Thank you for the clarification.
Did you want to add anything, Jody?
We were, we were paying at that time thirty dollars an hour, and we increased it to fifty-six to, to bring people back for COVID, to entice people to work for the summer months.
And it's just important to note that the fifty-six dollars an hour is now contractual as, as part of the CBA. On the benefit side, we are, in this budget, we are anticipating a five percent increase on both health and dental, so this is in conversations with both the town and the trust. They believe that this is a good percentage for us to go in at. Just as a point of reference, because I know last year, we budgeted at five percent, and then I actually came in at six and a half percent. So if that were to happen again, we're looking at about an eighty-thousand-dollar increase in our expenses, if it comes in above that five percent. We have our workers' comp, we have the benefit of receiving a rebate in fiscal twenty-five, which I know I brought to the school committee, so it helped offset our property and liability that went up. But based on, again, the conversations with the trust, we can anticipate that standard eight percent increase for this year. So that is included. And then I, I put the two rates for our ERSRI and our MERS for the pension rates. We have an increase on the MERS side at sixteen-point-eight and a slight decrease from fifteen-point-five-four to fifteen-point-one for the teachers. So overall, taking all things considered, we're looking at an increase on the benefit side of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. And some key variances that you'll see if you're looking through the full document are, we did have a reduction in dental, so we have less employees taking the dental plan than we had prior. We did have that, you know, small reduction in the ERSRI rate for our teachers. Again, last year, we had a reduction, and then they came back and increased it, which did cause some issues. Thankfully, the difference is very small, so hoping that if anything like that happens again, the impact will not be as significant as it was in fiscal twenty-five. And then just want to point out one thing, since it is aligned with our district goals, is that we have had a change in our employee assistance plan that we offer, and that was just made, the trust decided to change organizations. We had the option to go with the new organization or remain. We opted to go with the new program. It offers more services, and it's more easily available to our employees. It did come at a higher expense, but we were able to negotiate with the trust, and they're going to make up the difference so that we are comparable to what we've been paying year-over-year. So our employees are gonna be getting more services for roughly the same cost. So the next slide, which is, oh, good, it's not as tiny as I thought it was gonna be. So this is operational expenses by department, so this is its own section on the cover page of the actual budget document, but I wanted to put it here, and that's mainly so that you can see all the way over to the right, that variance side, so that's changed year-over-year. We have that large number, that one-million-three-eight-three-oh-four-three, that is our increase overall for those operating expenses, but what you can notice when you're looking at this slide is that they really are focused and concentrated in four main areas, and those are exploded out next. So the, the main points that are causing this increase are in information technology, buildings and maintenance, student transportation, and then I have it listed under central administration, but it's really our substitute line. So what I did differently this year is our district substitutes are included in that central admin budget. So when you look at the increase for administration, the majority of that increase is the substitutes.
Where was it previously?
So it was its own kind of line item within the fiscal budget, but since I, I thought it made sense in this budget document, under the central admin to include HR, fiscal.
Yeah, that's right, I just was curious where it was. Maybe it was at each school or whatever.
No, it had its own line within fiscal, and it's kind of rolled up, but it was hard to be able to identify those true increases, so that's why I included it here. So within information technology, and we can certainly speak to these in greater detail, but we have the replacement of the Chromebooks, we have some servers that are at end-of-life, and we have a VX rail that's also at end-of-life, and that is the majority of the overall increase. I think the total for IT is four-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty of it are.
Can we get a civilian description of what a VX rail is? I'm just sorry.
We had him explain it at the budget and finance meeting, because we didn't know there.
It's the box of servers, basically.
Thank you.
And from our conversations in our budget meetings, these are things that we have been pushing as far as we, they can possibly go, and we're now reaching critical stage with these items. So there were additional items that were proposed, but of those items, these are the key areas that really have to be considered. With building and maintenance, we, we've added, and this is a, a small addition to the overall maintenance budget, but we have added a section to allow us for improving our fleet, and that is a small line to account for a lease of a vehicle that would last five years so that, and that would remain in our budget, so that amount is always accounted for in our budget. But every five years, that lease would end, and we could start a new lease, which would allow us every five years to replenish our fleet, which would ultimately lower our maintenance and repair line, that you'll see actually has a fairly big increase this year because our, we have an aging fleet. We have a substantial increase, almost a hundred thousand in our electricity costs, so aside from just standard rate increases with electricity, we also have those solar credits that go to the town, those came in higher than we had anticipated last year, and they're trending a little bit higher this year, so we have accounted for that. And we have a contractual increase in our custodial services. And Chris, two percent? Two percent. Student transportation, we had a very big jump in our projection for our statewide transportation, so you'll, the, the, the increase looks very large on this budget because we had budgeted four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for fiscal of twenty-five, and when the projection actually came in, it came in at five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. So it's significantly higher, and it's, you know, it's trending that way again, so I have budgeted based on the five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand.
Great.
And, and I will say, and Michelle can speak to this, we, this, we learned this maybe what, a week, week and a half ago? So, and that's something that I'm, will have to be brought to the school committee, because we're gonna have to address that it's a big, big increase.
No, it's not, it's okay.
Unfortunately, there was no other meetings since that happened, otherwise I probably would have brought it ahead, but, so we, we do, you'll see that jump in there, because I wanted to make sure that we did not have that problem again. We do, we are currently in negotiations for that contract, so I can't go into much detail about how that is represented in the budget. We have summer school busing, that was again, part of Essar, that is now, and that was fully covered in Essar, that is now coming back into the budget. And then we have our Versatran software, which is what we use, it's our routing software that has to be migrated. We've now reached a point where we can no longer continue using the version that we're using, so similar to what happened with the fiscal software, I believe, last year? So that's being upgraded. And then we've already talked about central admins, so I will go into that again. And then my last slide are.
Wait, can we go back for a second? Just wanted to talk about the increase for the lease of Romano Way.
Oh, it's, so that is just including the lease, so originally, I know prior to me coming, there was discussion about moving out of this building, not continuing, not continuing the lease, but if we are moving, yeah, hopefully.
Yep, so as we had mentioned at previous meeting, the recommendation that I'm making is that we, the administration stays here at Romano. I know I, last year, made the recommendation for us to move out into Davisville Academy, because there was open space there, move the offices there, save on a lease, so that we were not paying for a lease, and that money can go into operations somewhere else. However, over the year, things have changed, looking at needs of programming, it really makes the most sense to continue using Davisville completely as a school, moving the preschool classrooms to Davisville, they were there once before, having that house our preschool program, opening up space at Fishing Cove, which will also help us in redistricting to alleviate space issues at Hamilton, which would also, for future, allow us to expand the preschool, because there's additional classrooms at Davisville, so we can expand, work on expanding the preschool, which means we would stay here. So Leslie has been working with Quantic Development, and they did write up a new lease for us. That lease, the last time it was done with any changes in finances was two thousand fifteen, so there is a slight increase in the lease for us to stay here.
Yeah, we can get into the details there. I just didn't want, I just wanted to note that, because it was a big, we mentioned it in another meeting, that's a big change based on what we were anticipating on February lease. Just to clarify, the number, two-fifty-three-eight-one-nine, that it's an increase, but then do subtract out that one-five-eight-eight-eight-four, like in theory, because it wasn't, like as far as like what, it's not like we're giving central admin two-fifty-three-eight-nineteen more, that number reflects the sub thing.
So then, so the one-fifty-eight is an increase that we are proposing to the subs, which is going to overall increase the sub line. So had the sub line not been in the budget, the, the increase for central admin would have been less by a hundred and fifty-eight.
And that's not an increase because we're increasing administration. I'll make that clear. See, that increase of central administration of two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-nineteen, a hundred and fifty-eight-thousand-eight-eight-four is due to an increase in the sub line, because the sub line is falling under the central administration department, so it's not an increase in administration.
And that'll be, I think that's the next slide you'll, you'll show us, the increase in admins.
So it's included in, it's really like, right.
So the.
One-fifty-eight-eight-four is in the two-fifty-three.
Is in the two-fifty-three, yes. So, so it's really made up of, there was a slight increase to what we're paying now. If we, if we are to stay at Romano, they were able to keep us as close to where we are now, but since it's been such a long time since the lease was negotiated, there is a rate increase. So the rate increase is there, plus our fiscal software was increased from what we're paying now, so.
And a position. Or is that not?
No, that's not in here. No, none of, none of the positions have been included. I will say, on a side note, I am investigating the fiscal software because the price is continually increasing, so I am investigating alternative options for that, because it's a significant amount of money.
And it's not on the next slide, it'll be in the budget documents.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at.
I said yes.
I was looking at this, sorry about that. But I do know you have it in here, so that the public can see how many.
Specifically in the budget documents.
In the budget documents.
About, I just have a question about the long-term subs. In general, what is the definition of a long-term sub?
So a long-term sub is a teacher that is in one position, one position for consecutive four to five days.
Okay, thank you.
And do, and, and just to explain, just so that what the, the public knows, so the long-term subs that we're talking about here are part of our contract with ESS, used to be sourced for teachers, and we pay a daily rate to them, and so what we're suggesting in the budget document is to increase that daily rate, which would ultimately increase our overall sub cost by one-fifty.
Can I ask questions now or do you want to wait until?
We have one more slide.
Okay, I can wait.
So the last slide are the new position requests for fiscal year twenty-six. So during our budget conversations, I asked each of the department heads to say, you know, what, what is the most important, what are the critical needs, like what, if you had the ability to add positions, what would it be? So this is what's represented in this document here. These are not in the budget. So this is not anything that is represented in the budget, because obviously, this needs to be a conversation, it needs to be vetted. So it's, it's here for reference to see what the schools are requesting, and then obviously, we all see where we are with the budget now. The fiscal impact of adding these positions is about one-point-four-million dollars, and that's for salary and benefits. So if we were to, to do every single one of these positions, it would add about one-point-four-million dollars to the budget, but I think it's important for us to recognize what the administration and what the different schools are. But I think it's important for us to recognize what the administration and what the different schools are, you know, requesting.
And Leslie, and on the second Fishing Cove line there, see how it says two point oh? Is that one TA for special ed and one TA for positive pathways or?
I believe it's two TAs for positive pathway.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm looking at Rachel.
Which falls under the special education.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
You shouldn't put my name on, on many of these items. Sorry.
At some point, can we get a breakdown, like I know you said it's one point four million total, but can we get a breakdown by position? Like, like so that way if we do at some point say, hey, actually we really think we should put that in, like knowing what the fiscal impact would be.
Absolutely.
And the reading specialist is to come out of the Title II grant, but we, the CRP, the solid resource plan is not open yet. But the plan is, once we get the Title II funds, that if we can, that's where it will go.
Great.
So that, that's all I have in terms of a general overview, quick, high level for each of the areas. But we can certainly now go department by department if you'd like and, or if you, if you'd like to ask questions first and I can answer those.
Questions on the slides and then we can go into the budget document.
I, I have a few questions that if this is not the time and the place, if they're too in the weeds, just let me know. But I figured I'd just start to ask away. So, um, let me try to go in order here. Looking at the expenditures, the key operational variances slide. Number two, uh, I, I do know that recently we have renewed our contract with the custodial services. But I was just wondering when that contract, does anybody have any clue or idea when that contract is up?
It's renewed annually unless they leave us or we tend to leave them.
And is that ABM?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we are looking at that.
We'll be getting our presentation.
Yeah, at the next meeting, right?
I was saying very soon to be nice, but very soon, within a year. That's something that then admin's going to circle back on this one.
And is it annual, like are we the school annual?
Except for the next school committee meeting.
Yeah, it's, I think the next one is the school committee. We were wrong this morning when we were talking. Yep. So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next question right under that, number three, the student transportation, um, in general about summer school. So the SR funds have run out for that. And I, I'm just always one of those people who tries to think in terms of priorities and needs versus wants or really, really needs versus other needs. How long has the district been offering summer school? Has that just been like since the dawn of time? And is that just a really nice bonus that we offer? But if we're really tight on budget, we may have to cut back on that.
Are you talking about the summer school buses? The buses or the actual summer school program?
Both. Because, I mean, without the program, we wouldn't have the busing. But I'm just thinking, but in terms of paying now, instead of it coming out of any sort of SR funding. I guess I just don't know the history of how far back summer school has gone in the district. Is it a requirement by ride that districts offer summer programs or summer schools?
So, so no, to answer that question. Um, but I will say that, so ESY, which is our program, summer program for special need students, that's, that's necessary, absolutely necessary per, per their needs, per their, per their plans. As far as the, um, the program that we run at the elementary level, I'm not sure exactly how long that's been, but it's been a program that we've run for quite a while.
Very long time.
Very long time.
Yeah. Um, so that's been a, it's been, it's been a program that I think people depend on. And I think it's, it's really very consistent with kind of our goals and trying to, and we've got a lot of work there to try to, um, again, keep, i- identify students who could use the extra help and to really provide that targeted instruction over the summer to keep them at, at level and keep that slip from happening as best, as best as we can. Um, and at the secondary level, specifically the high school level, you're talking about a lot of credit recovery that happens in the summer. And that's critical for graduation rate for students staying on track to, um, you know, to, to graduate on time and to complete their four years of high school. So, I mean, from a standpoint of that, like, yeah, we, we do believe in it very much, I think, as a, as a, as a need item. As far as the transportation is concerned, um, again, when it comes to students able to access our summer programming, it's really hard without transportation. Summer, summer program is not all day. Um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a part of the day. And so working families really don't have a lot of ability most times to transport their children.
For a few hours.
Yeah, exactly. So when you talk about a program that runs from like eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, at eleven-thirty time, it's not usually convenient for families to, to get them there. We're working right now with, um, with, with the town to try to, you know, have some efficiencies in terms of transportation happening to our, to our summer camps potentially, so that students can kind of piggyback on those things. Do the academic in the morning and the summer camp in the afternoon, again, for convenience of families. So I can see, I can see your point with the question. I, I personally, I think that's really, this is, this is an important item. It's a really a need item, um, as far as making the program work.
No, I agree. And, and that's why I asked though, because you explained all of the reasons we do need it. So that's very helpful.
And, and with ESY for extended school year, the transportation is required for extended school year because that's part of an IEP service that you would provide to a student.
I've actually seen kids who've gone to the summer program and like significantly do better than next year. So it's not, you know, pretty, like it's, it's not like any kid can go. It's kids that actually, you know, are not scoring as well in school and it kind of just helps with the gap. And my daughters went to summer school, which I also think helped with the, you know, like the little lag in the summer of not having any school.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on the slides?
I have a bunch of questions, but are you ready?
Particularly for the slides. So like, I think we're going to walk through the other document. And so if it's something specific to the slides, and then if not, we'll go through.
Well, everything on the slides is in the document. So do you want me to wait?
Yes, I do. No, I think that'll just be more efficient, right? And like, I think if we go through and kind of like walk through the document, it might be more efficient. Because if not, we're just going to end up referencing it and jumping all over. So that would be my recommendation, but I would.
I have one more quick question. Um, do you know off the top of your head or approximate the preschool for, over Fishing Cove, the tuition, um, for this year or, or the upcoming year?
What we brought in, like what the tuition cost will be?
Yes. Or even what they are this year.
I feel like I know, but I'm afraid to say because I don't want to make sure how many students.
That's okay.
Chaz, when folks are talking in the seats, can you hear it on the mic?
That portion, that you can.
You could hear Rachel. Because you're so close, Rachel, this one. I just want to make sure. It's okay if people can't see them, but I want to make sure that, that audio picks up.
I do know that what we charge is comparable with all of our neighbors.
Yeah, we'll note it. We'll note it as a question that we can follow up.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I just figured I'd ask. Thank you.
Leslie.
Yes.
As far I know, you can answer, say, it is two, so. The three-year-old AM program, uh, goes Monday through Thursday. That is two hundred dollars per month. The four-year-old program, um, is in the afternoon. It's Monday through Friday and that's two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I know we can't talk a lot because we're in negotiations with certain, but have you put any kind of placeholder in them, in those numbers? Or are those numbers actually lower than what they're going to be?
So there are placeholders within the budget and I'm also, there are some contingency lines that are built within the budget. I can't say more.
Right.
But if we get to that point, I can certainly, you know. We're grounded.
But also, even with that said, like where we end up might not be what's in there. So that's just to understand too.
Yes.
Because the timelines might not line up with budgets and where the negotiations are, as you know.
The, one question on the slide is the substitute rate. We're only increasing the long-term sub, not the daily sub?
Correct.
And that's because we're having a hard time banking long-term subs?
Yes. In our conversations with ESS, they believe that that will help significantly with our fill rate, but that we are doing decently with our standard rate that we have. And we did confirm that our contract is not going to change for next year. So there's no other increases that we would be anticipating other than ones that we would make.
Is that consistent across the state?
It's, it's a little unique for us in terms of we're, we're one of the few people that uses this agency, uh, one of the few districts. I think actually we're one of two.
Yes, just.
And I think my old district is the one that used it. So it's, it's hard because it's not really comparing apples to apples. But I will say that across the state, the, especially the long-term rates have been increasing. And that's why we have struggled to get teachers because they can go one district over and get significantly higher rate.
All right. So do we want to kind of dig through the packet?
And I'm happy to do it in whatever way, having this be the first budget workshop that I'm working with in North Kingston. If there's a way that you would prefer to do it, if we want to just start with, you know, the first page and people can ask questions.
Because this layout is different for everyone. I know we did it at the Budget Finances Advisory meeting, um, but not I remember was there. And I also think for the purpose of the public hearing it, I think it would be good to, we don't have to go through every line, but I think write down the document of how we set it up.
Sure. So in order to try and be as transparent as possible with the public so that they can see, you know, how things are aligning, I tried to set this up departmentally. So where are, where are these dollars being spent? Not necessarily just using it and looking at a string of UCOA numbers that may not make any sense to the general public. I wanted them to say, okay, this number aligns with supplies and materials and it is consistently supplies and materials in each department so that we can get an overall idea. And then referring back to that pie chart that I had, um, they all ultimately will roll up into those big buckets, that fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five. So the front page of the document is a roll-up of everything. So that's kind of the overview of operating expenses at the department level. Then you've got your salary and benefits all rolled up so that you can kind of see year over year what we're looking at. And then the, the entire total revenue on that main page. And then each of these sections broken out in detail as we go through. So everything at the top has its own page. So North Kingston High School will have its own budget, um, and so on and so forth. And salaries has a different document. So our salaries and benefits are completed outside of this workbook. The, the main roll-up is what's included in this budget document. But I do have significantly more detail of what goes into those salary and benefit numbers in this upper document. It's just so large to include it. So a lot of what's, you know, on that, this main page is what was discussed in the presentation. But if there are specific things that we want to talk about here, I'm happy to do it. Otherwise I'll just roll right into the actual department level items.
I did have one more question. Um, on, you're talking about this very first page. So under student services, can you give us an idea of, it looks like there's a decrease this year. Can you give us an idea of what would be either cut or just not needed?
Sure. So there are a couple of line items that were decreased within that. So student services is obviously our special education department. And we had some, a lot of efficiencies that the department has been working on. So the decreases that you see are more from an efficiency standpoint as opposed to a cutting standpoint. So I think that's important to note. And the, that can range from using our purchase services more wisely in, in terms of occupational therapy, our therapists, podiologists, just really focusing on how we're using the time of those individuals that we have, that we're contracted with. We are working very hard to bring students back into district who might be in out placements. So one of the largest reductions in that line is within our out-of-district private source line item. So again, this is based off of the numbers that we're anticipating right now. That can change. So that is very important to know that that is a line item that is in flux, um, constantly throughout the year. But based on what we have now, what we anticipate for next year, we are thinking that we will be able to have more students back in-house than we have this year. And some of the other efficiencies, efficiencies that we saw were specifically in the line. If you look, it's the fifty-three, four, one, seven contracted nurses line. On this document, it looks like it's a six hundred dollar decrease. But we really looked at how we're using our staff as opposed to contracting those services out. So what was a larger number here, what would have been a higher number is now actually in our salary line. So we've moved some things around and we have open, um, teaching assistant positions that we are anticipating that we fill those positions as opposed to using outside services. So that's where you'll see the majority of those. Like I said, it's more efficiencies than it is a cutting.
Cutting, right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions about kind of the organization of this first roll-up document? Or which is the first, two pages, right?
No, just the first page. The second page is detail revenue line.
Got it. Um, so any questions about that first page, the roll-up? Anyone, as far as especially like categories or anything like that, or any of the numbers that are reflected?
On student services, the, um, proposed, um, shift to Davisville, is that included in here?
So how some of the classrooms would be set up and where we have them is reflected in here. But the overall cost of that move is not reflected in here.
So in, is that in the facility line?
So there are two areas in the budget where I have accounted for the costs for that. It actually is in the central, uh, I believe it's in the furniture and fixtures line, where we have an approximate amount of fifty thousand dollars that's set aside for that move. And that was money that was originally set aside for the move of this office that we've reallocated. And then my understanding is the hope would be that money is currently in this budget, that we would use money from this year to start that transition and then we've accounted for that same amount of money.
So a hundred K?
Yes.
Is the playground accounted for?
So that would be part of the.
That's part of the hundred.
I think what would be helpful, and I know it's hard, is to price, like to give us a, um, like, like at least a guesstimate of how much that move would be. Like, is it close to the hundred K? Is it maybe hopefully under? Is it possibly over? Like, I think just having an understanding of the full budget impact could be helpful. And so I know that's hard. It doesn't have to be exact, but like a, a gist, like how much does a playground cost? How much, it, do we not have HVAC in some of the areas? You know, like kind of some of those big picture things. I think that would be helpful for understanding that, that full impact. But it's good to know that there's about a hundred grand built into this.
HVAC should not be a concern. I don't think that.
I made that up. I just picked something that you want me to talk about. No, you know, like I was just thinking about like not just the Friday, it's not just the furniture. It's not just whatever. It's, it's the whole space.
But there's, it's also, there's, you know, boxes and everything and, you know, the cost of moving everything over.
Getting the space ready and moving over it. Yeah.
And I will say, we spent, um, Mr. Murphy and I spent a significant amount of time in trying to figure out what the budget would be for the central office move. And so that, because of, recently, that's what, so we have some of the numbers for that. I actually think it will be significantly less than what we had done just because there's not as much infrastructure that has to be changed to keep it in classroom.
We'll save the right money, just that part.
And I know that the playground was on a CIP list in the last handful of years. Obviously because of inflation and stuff, I'm sure prices will have changed. But at least there's kind of a general concept.
You can get a wide variety of playground prices, you know, from very small and rudimentary to full blown. I've seen five hundred thousand dollar playgrounds, but I've also seen ones for twenty thousand. So.
I think the particularly important thing is making sure that it fits the needs of the students that are going to be there for the, like making sure that it's accessible and all of those sort of things. So, okay, that's great.
Dr. Duba, so is this a definite, we are doing this in September, this move of the preschool to Davisville Academy?
I would say this is a ninety-five percent chance.
Okay.
Not a chance. Recordations, ninety-five percent.
We're the five percent, right, in that conversation?
The five percent is like, but no, we're definitely hoping at that.
Thank you.
Do we have, um, speaking of just explaining the preschool, do you see though that kids who get to go through the preschool like end up doing better? Because I mean, not everyone can afford for the kids to go to preschool. So I feel like us adding to preschool is actually a benefit to the town long-term with their, the kids just getting a jump on school.
I, I think if you look at research, the sooner you get children into school, the sooner they are, are working on their early literacy skills and math skills and social skills and communication skills, which is going to enhance them academically once they enter kindergarten in the first grade.
Yeah. I was just curious if we like kind of track those kids that go through our preschool.
Uh, I wouldn't say we necessarily track them. I would say to pull some data out, but I mean, it's something that we could, you know, you could look at that to go of our students that were there.
You know, how much they benefited.
And I think if you just pull research, general national research shows that sort of earlier, sooner that you're in school, the better you'll do. COVID is a prime example. If you look at students that were not in school during COVID and are now, that was a, that was a huge.
You just have to control for students that went to private pre-Ks.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, I think sometimes it's kids who, I think private pre-Ks are expensive compared to what we.
Just to clarify though, the, the, the plan of this dance. Just to clarify though, the, the, the plan that stands right now to transition is not to expand currently. That if we move forward, it would just be a, a switch of location, there would be no change to the service.
It's so for the future, right? We are, yeah, we are keeping the same number of classrooms.
I think what would be helpful-
But for the future years, we could expand.
Right, it would have the ability to expand.
I think what would be helpful in that, in, for me understanding that investment, is knowing, um, what, the exact number of like students that we were serving, cause I know it decreased last year with some of the changes that we were doing with the need for, like the peer partners, we had a decrease. Um, and so I think just trying to have a, I know Rachel presented some stuff to us, but kind of just seeing what this impact would do over the next five years would be helpful for me. Like as far as like enrollment-
For bringing in typical peers?
Or just bringing it over to DA, what are some opportunities we might have in the future as far as being able to expand pre-K in the district?
So I think if, you know, if we look at the current program we have, we're not looking at changing the programming, right? So we did make some changes last year for this year, which we had to do to increase, um, number of spaces for students with disabilities. That decreased the number of spots that we had for typical peers. So we're not gonna see any increase in, in typical peers next year. But, in planning and budgeting for additional programming, we can look at that and say if we add additional classes, and if it's a typical ratio of fifteen students, then, um, of those students, eight are typical peers and, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what, we don't have to do it right now, but that's what I was kind of thinking through. Cause just, I wanna make sure that making this move is sound as far as where the district's gonna go long-term. I don't want in three years, the school committee to be faced again with, oh, now we have to do X and we have to move again. You know, that's what I'm trying to work through, is if we're gonna invest this money, making sure that it's gonna serve the district for, for certain amount of time.
Yeah, and we have the classroom space there. So the space is there for us to be able to add additional classrooms. It's just then budgeting for the staff that we have to do, and furniture and supplies.
Are there any other questions on the roll-up document? Okay, one more in this page.
Okay, still here. I'm going to assume that we're gonna have a lot of questions on this page. Trust me, from line item number one, where I have included a reappropriation of fund balance. So, um, just as point of reference, I know I mentioned it in the presentation, but, um, now that we've had the audit presented, so we are going to have a net positive change.
And just, just for clarification, the audit will get presented to the school committee at our next meeting?
Well, um, so right now it's tentatively scheduled for February eleventh.
Okay.
I can certainly get that moved if we need to move it to a different meeting, that's not a problem.
Maybe just getting it emailed to us, we can write?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we should be, and we should be getting bound copies as well from them. So I'm still waiting for my hard copy as well.
Great. Um, just if, it got presented at the town council yesterday, that's why it's-
We had, we had audit committee yesterday at, um, I can't remember what time, it was six thirty. Five thirty and then town council was at six thirty.
Just in, since we're talking about saving money, does anybody really want a bound copy of the order?
Oh, wow.
I just need one. I use it all day, every day.
I just, I mean, that seems to be something that we don't want to use.
I know they don't charge, I'm sure they don't charge, I don't want it.
Do they charge?
They, well, they, no, no, they give it to us.
Well, it's probably included in their cost.
No, they give it to us.
The audit, the audit provides it to us. Cause we, I, I am not buying-
We're not, we're not running up copies.
But you never know that they don't charge.
Personally, I will recule it, and I don't want to, so you can tell them.
And I have a drawer full from prior years, so I will make sure that we don't do that again.
Just use those.
I wish they were right.
Just to clarify though on that, and we'll learn more about how we got that money to possibly be able to reappropriate into our budget, but I, I feel like I caught you say that, that number might be about nine hundred?
So our net positive change in fund balance is nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So we did have a surplus last year, um, based on two very specific areas that we can go into detail on. But because we did draw from our fund balance throughout the year, the overall net change is an increase of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. And, that was based on not being fully staffed. So we had a significant savings in terms of, and it's not really a savings, it was not good that we were not fully staffed at all. But, we, what, what the audit will call efficiencies in salaries and benefits.
It stresses to the current employees that are doing the work.
Yes. Of about one point five million dollars. So we were below our budget amount by one point five. And I do have a, I, a separate document that if anyone wants, I can provide that, kind of spells out how we got there, what positions were filled, what the approximate amount was for each of those, um, which we did have to provide for the audit. So, and then the benefits that go along with that were obviously reduced. And then we also had purchase services that came in about four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars below what we had budgeted, but that is across all of the other lines. So that is the fifty-three, the fifty-four, the fifty-five series. So that could be accounted for in, um, transportation. So we, we were able to move other things to ESSER that had not previously been, they had been in our budget, but then we were able to move them to ESSER, so they did come out, so then we, we saw a reduction there. So, I think specifically we had some, um, psychologist services that we had. We had the busing, the summer school, we were able to pull summer school out, a second summer. So that all accounted for, for the change there. So, we do not anticipate having that significant of a surplus, um, this year because we have, majority of our positions are filled right now. I think we only have about eight open positions as we stand right now in fiscal twenty-five. And, and just to put in perspective, so at this time last year, we had twenty-six TAs alone that were unfilled. So, um, so that surplus, again, we took out one point seven million out of our fund balance. So when you do math, you end up with the net change of the nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And of that, I am recommending that we pull five hundred back and reappropriate that back into our general fund, similar to what had been done, not this year, but prior three years, I believe. That will allow us to cover some of the larger items that we can go into more detail, whether it be the technology, whether it be just some of the standard increases. It's not always a great idea to rely on operational things by using the fund balance, but we do have that ability, and that fund balance is created because of operational efficiencies. So reallocating it back, um, is, is probably a smart idea.
I would say that, although I, I've practiced, it is not obviously the best thing to do with, we're still, and I think it's so hard to remember this, like still recovering from COVID, like in these years, and that, like the ESSER funding just ending, like that makes sense, why we were able to have that overage. And then also, um, like the teacher shortage and the TA shortage and all that, that was all affected by that. So I feel like this is something that isn't usual, but makes sense to put it back in so that we can ask for, you know, like that, if we put, if we take that five-hundred-thousand dollars out, that four-point-one percent would go even higher.
It brings us to about five percent.
Yeah, so I think that, to me, it's a reasonable request, um, even though it's not the best practice, but we can talk it through later, but that makes sense.
And I did keep it, you know, at the five hundred, even though there was that nine hundred, because I know throughout this year, there were certain things that we talked about with the fund balance of making sure like at stage two, wanting to make sure that we were gonna have a surplus to cover some things that were unexpected in fiscal twenty-five. So I didn't wanna take any more than that because I wanted to make sure that we did have some reserve in there for any of those unexpected costs.
Anything else that you wanna highlight here, Leslie, before folks ask questions on this page?
Um, sure, I just wanna talk about the tuition of other LEAs. Again, I just wanna specify how we arrived at that number, cause it does look like a big jump. So, that budget, the original budget that you see from twenty-five was based on a hundred and twenty students at the fiscal twenty-four rate from RIDE. So when I did my budget, I based it off of the twenty-five numbers, the current number of students, and that increase in what the tuition will be based on RIDE. So that will be, that's why it looks like there's a fairly significant jump in revenue, cause I wanted to be as close to what we can anticipate as possible. But I, I'm confident that that's not a far reach at all for that number. And I did want to just see if there's any, if we wanna have a discussion about the investment earnings, because I know that that's a, a big leap from what was discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. I think, I mean, right now, we are in January and looking at December's numbers, we've already earned over three hundred thousand dollars in interest. Granted, the interest rates were a little bit higher at the beginning half of this year. And they, there, we just recently learned that we've had a small drop in the interest rate, but not significant compared to, it's still higher than what it was before we had it changed, um, in April. So I, I really do think that if, if we're looking at what is realistic, if we want, if we wanna be honest about what it is, I hate to budget low and then look like we're playing games, to be perfectly honest. I really do think that we could comfortably get that four hundred thousand.
The opposite side of that risk is if, if we're wrong, we won't have a number of, like, there's a potential, that number is not in our control, if you will. And I think that's where we ended up last year, trying to be a little conservative in that because we were, we had no idea what the market was gonna do, just like we had no idea what the market's gonna do this year. And so that made me particularly nervous just as far as like that piece of it, but also, like historically, I can see where you got to that number.
And, and I am looking, you know, now that I'm in this position, there was not someone in this position solely doing this role last year, but I have the ability where I really look at that investment account, and I'm monitoring it, and I'm looking at how the money is kept in that account, and, you know, moving it around or doing what we need to do so that we are aware of what that, those earnings are, and we're staying on top of it. So I think that allows us a little bit more security in, in that someone is now watching it daily.
Yeah, and you, you like that very much. Any questions regarding that line, or?
No, I think like we talked about in the budget meeting, like bumping it up and like this is an aggressive number, but i- if you ran the analysis and you're confident that this is a realistic, um, number, I mean, cause we, I only see to two thousand and twenty-three, but I don't think we've ever hit, I know, I know interest rates changed, but that would be the only thing, like if they swing, we're in trouble.
Yes, yes.
Well, and that's something though, budgets are your best guess, right? And so if, if something happens with the market that's big and it's gonna, people are projecting it's going to continue, then the school committee would have to come back and readjust after our first quarter, second quarter, or something like that. You know, like if it was that big of a thing happened.
And it certainly, and, and I don't wanna say this because it's, it's not any good, it's been discussed, so just know that, that, that we can certainly go to the town too and, and have conversations with them about how we are receiving our appropriations and our state aid and how that comes in here, so that if we needed to make changes to accommodate for that interest number, I think they would be amenable to working with us on making sure that we have the cash flow that we need and the time that we need it to be able to accommodate those numbers, so.
I listened to the town council meeting today, and the town finance manager was doing the same thing, like still maintaining an aggressive forecast for their investment income, so I think this is in line with that.
Okay.
Other questions? Could you just clarify for me what other fees, like what kind of things fall into that other fees revenue line?
So, there it is a little bit of a hodgepodge. Um, um, so we have, there's some versions of, it's not rental income, but money that's coming in, that's not quite a donation, but not quite a rental that will come into the district that has to be kind of clar- clarified into this main bucket. We do have insurance proceeds that I have rolled into other fees and other income sources that used to be its own line, so that's, it's kind of rolled in because, um, it, we don't have a lot of historical data, but we do have it, and it's something we've had, you know, the last two years, so I wanted to include it. But I can certainly get you a complete breakdown of all of the things that are in there.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, it's not hard, but, um, but also, what I was noticing about that line is that, like in FY twenty-four, it was, the actual revenue ended up being ninety-four, one forty-five. But then, last year, we had only approved sixty thousand dollars, like we had approved the sixty thousand dollars for that line in the budget, and we're only at thirty-three, seven-two-five, so like, we're, we're beyond halfway, and so, it, that, and then you're projecting sixty again. So that's where, just like the ninety-four to sixty and where we are currently, just made me curious on why that would be going down.
So one of, one of the things that rolls in here is the purchase, the sale of school property. Um, so the sale of items that we've had, and I know at the end of last year, the facilities department did, um,
Yeah, I remember Mike saying this.
And, and I, I don't wanna call it the, the wrong thing, but, but the-
Yeah, it was a governmental meeting.
There was a governmental site where you could bid on different items that we had that we were on longer. It's kind of like an auction. So I believe that that is accounted for in that number, so there was-
In the FY twenty-four, in that high one, we, we sold some cool stuff at the auction.
We, so we sold some stuff at the auction.
I would like to go to the auction someday, hypothetically, Chris, if you ever want to go.
There's the old print, I think there's old printers and some other printers.
I remember I was talking about it at some point.
And it was so, I do believe that that number is what-
It was a fluke, it was a fluke. Like, that's not, that's-
I'm not counting on us being able to sell more items.
Right, that's helpful, thank you. Other questions?
Do you know the total balance of the fund balance?
So, I, I don't, I can give you a ballpark.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna get that next.
Based on, on my memory of looking at the financial statements. So, um, what you'll see in the financial statements when you get it, they've rolled up what's the thirty-two oh one, which is our capital reserve account, and the unrestricted fund balance. So it comes out to, I believe, seven point one combined. I think just the unrestricted, we're at, I believe it was like six million and three-three-three, somewhere around there. But overall, across both the capital reserve and unrestricted, it was seven point one.
But a, a good chunk of that is assigned.
Yes, yes, a significant amount of that is assigned.
I just wanna be very clear. I think we're gonna get that, so based on what Ken and I talked about, like we'll get the audit presentation and the other accounts. Like, we're gonna have a quick discussion at the end about what we would like to see for capital and enterprise, and then we'll get that presentation the next time, just so, to give Leslie. So we'll get a full, full picture of that.
Yes.
Any other questions regarding this page? And we're just gonna keep, sorry, I didn't have, I just said one, sorry. Um, I was trying to pause to let people ask, but then I- For the MLL learner line?
Yes.
It was my understanding that that was gonna come in differently, but we're still pulsing it out?
No, it, it will come in differently, so if, in the printed document, it's a little hard to tell if you look at the, the version that I was saying.
Oh, the lines are the same?
Um, so I put it there so that we can see what is allocated, because they do show on the state aid document that this thirty-eight, oh my gosh, I cannot see, two-two-oh.
Two-two-oh.
Two-two-oh is restricted. So that is part of work that has to be done within MLL. However, that thirty-eight, two-two-oh is rolled in and is part of the thirteen, three-eight, oh-six, oh-four. So if you're looking at the document, you add them together, it is not included in the thirteen, four-sixty-two, four-forty-five as, as its own line. So just the top two numbers are what equal that. I can break that up differently.
No, 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 it's totally fine. I was just thinking, like, maybe put an asterisk next to that number and then next to the, the green line number, just saying like this number's not in this number, you know, or like this number is included as part of that. Like, it just looks, I totally understand what you're saying, but it looks like we messed up the math by forty grand almost. But you didn't, I, I get it.
And, and I will say, so part of how the town has been recording it was similar to this. So for being uniform in how they're representing it and how we're representing it, I did keep it this way. But for, for this year, but I think they were gonna adjust.
Long-term, yeah. And I like that we have it this way, cause it shows, like, what that line's done over years. It just like, just if we can, it's, it's more of like a layout, they're not a- Any other questions on this one?
Just so, I'm gonna say all my questions to the end, so it isn't that there aren't any.
I'm gonna save some of your questions.
Somebody, why aren't you asking them?
I don't wanna run out of time.
In the quarter of this.
We'll get them in the order.
I can't, they're all over the place.
That's it.
Has the town given you any kind of ideas this year, like where they would like to see us? Like, where they wanna try to, I know they wanna keep taxes low, they wanna, you know?
Yes, they wanna keep taxes low.
Of course.
Did not tell us like the level of funding or not. Um, we did have a meeting with Ralph and Deb last week, so we just kinda go through budgets, so they know where we're at, but the number that on Friday, the increase was slightly lower than where it is today because we had more work to do. So they know that we were coming in, I think it was three point nine one when we met with them.
When we met with them, it was-
And now it's four point one, just because we tried, we were trying to balance out as much as we could, and they knew at the time we still had work to do, so.
And the three point nine one that we had given them was what was presented in December, so that was based on-
We were really clear, and that was not, like-
And they know too, I mean, you talk with Deb on a regular basis.
But they haven't said we'd like you to come in three percent or?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the next section that we have are employee benefits. And, the, obviously the biggest things to note on this page are the increase in health. So one thing that we are continuing to do this year, that was started last year, is that we are budgeting based on what the actual usage of the health plan is as opposed to just assuming that everybody has one plan. So this is based on the employees as they stand and the positions as they stand right now. So obviously, this can be in flux next year based on new employees that come in, employees that leave, what have you.
When's the open enrollment period for the, the district?
So we had one in, we just had one at the end of December, right, or the beginning in January, and then we'll have another one in, I believe, July. and then we'll have another one in, I believe, July. Yeah, the summer.
And just one question about the EAP. The cost has increased, but our cost has not, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we were, we had the benefit of, we were kind of early adopters to this new plan, and so the trust is going to, they kind of asked us what we had been paying previously, and they are offsetting the difference.
This year?
No, for the next three years, for the next three years, they're gonna do that. So as members of the trust, we received a 20% discount, and then, so I believe that brought the overall cost about 11,000.
Can you just, can somebody just explain what the trust is? Like, I was just thinking about if I was at home and was trying to pay attention, I might be like. What is Oz? Like, no, can somebody just explain that for the, the viewers?
Do you wanna take that?
So the trust is the, so the, it's a, it's the insurance company that we use, and they provide coverage for most public school districts in the state. So liability insurance goes through them.
Worker's compensation.
Compensation, they provide professional development and training to all of us throughout the year for just for things. They do a lot of safety, facilities, training, teacher training.
That, that's good enough. I just was just thinking, like, it sounded.
Cause their name is like the trust.
Well, it's the inter-local trust.
Yeah, and it's not just, it elevates school departments, the towns are also involved in that. And North Kingstown as a town is in the trust.
They provide, they also provided the municipality and newly elected school community officials training along with, that was like a separate thing that was offered in addition to the Red Island School Committee.
Alright, perfect, thank you, I just, that's helpful.
One more question on EAP, so you said that we're gonna get expanded services for the new program. How well utilized is the EAP by the district?
So I would have, I'm gonna defer that to our director of HR, I can certainly ask and have her get back to you, cause I don't wanna misrepresent at all, but I'm sure she.
Jen, I could add that as a, like, you know how we have presentations from different administrators at different points? That might be good, just to have a good understanding of that.
Yeah, like what's, what's offered.
So we could add that, not, not urgent, but can you, does that make sense, just a quick one?
Yeah, like we can get data to find like how many staff might use it, but we don't get, you know, like if anyone calls, like.
No, you don't know that Fred called, like.
I think you're looking for, trying to get, making sure that they know and, yeah.
Especially since you said it's new and now it's gonna be more.
It's also, I mean, they offer different health and wellness programs. You can also get personal financial support, mental health support, what was that?
Legal.
Legal support, yeah, and it's a variety of services that they provide to the staff.
Um, can somebody just clarify for me, medical buybacks, is that when people don't take our insurance?
Yes, so if, and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, cause again, it predates me, but I believe this is almost entirely made up from our ESP individuals, because I believe it was taken out of the teacher contract in the last negotiation, so I believe it is just the ESP individuals that we're seeing now. But I, I will confirm that, cause I.
Now I'm curious.
I know there were changes in the contract where if you and your spouse both were.
I thought it was still in there.
It was a certain year, there was a cutoff.
Yeah, I think there was a cutoff.
And then there was also restrictions to.
We have some people grandfathered in and they're still getting it, but there, there was a date.
Okay, I'll look into that in the contracts, but, so that, so that number, you had proposed a higher number for that, so you anticipate?
So this is based off of what we anticipate in terms of like changes now. So if I look at what we had had prior and I look at what the employees have now, we, I'm just noticing that when I pull my numbers, we have increased individuals that are electing not to have health insurance now.
So it might be more accurate.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that number is based off of, it's pulled right from my salary data and all of my, my worksheets that I have for salary and benefits. And one of the big things, I'm sure you noticed that last year in the presentation, salaries was just a line and all of the health was just one line. So I did wanna break it out, cause I think it's important, especially for the public to know when they look at those big numbers for benefits, what makes up those numbers, and I think it's important to point out just how much of that is our pension contributions that we make for our employees.
So can I, would you ask a question?
Yep, sure. If you wanna just come up and then just say your name and then, you're welcome.
Oh, thank you. So my name is Karen Potkohl, and I had a question about the health benefits. So for this year, you show that teachers' benefits for health is about 3.830, and it's gonna increase next year to 4.199, which is an increase of $369,745. But for ESPs, the current cost is 1.516 million, and it's going up to 1.556, which is only an increase of 39,000. So teachers' benefits are gonna increase by 369,000. I know there's, there's 2.4 times more teachers than ESPs, but still, for benefits for ESPs, only going up 40,000 dollars?
So it's important to note that the ESP has a completely different health plan than what the teachers have. So the teachers have an HSA plan, whereas the ESP employees do not, and so the costs of those plans, so we're looking at the cost to the employer itself.
They have a high deductible plan that comes with an HSA, and we have a regular health plan that comes with an FSA.
The working rates within those that we base the budget off of are significantly different. And because there's a higher population of teachers to ESP, that would, that's gonna account for there being.
But I thought high deductible plans normally had lower premiums.
Believe it or not, in this environment, it is not a significant, in terms of the premium savings, because of the co-share part that we have, and that the percentage of your co-share is different than the co-share that the teachers pay, the overall offset is not as drastic as you would think in other districts, but they're, they also have a different co-share amount than what the ESP has.
Right, and so is, is that the contribution that the district makes to the HSA?
That's also, that's also included in there, so what's part of this plan is our, the 2,001,000 that is part of the HSA is rolled up into that as well.
So those are, those are accurate numbers then, what you're saying, is it not?
If, if it's okay with you, I'd love to have your number, so I could actually like verify. I don't wanna say yes, there.
Well, these are your numbers, this, I'm looking at your spreadsheet that you.
Where, are you looking at the overall?
The very extensive breakdown of the numbers.
The one that's, the salvage, the salvage? Like that, looks like that one.
Right, that has broken down administrators, teachers, ESP.
I was, I was looking at the other sheet, I'm like.
So you're looking, oh, I see where you see it, on the ESP line for health, there's only, it's 39805, that's the number you were referencing.
And up above, the teachers is 369,000.
Yep, difference.
And, and, and a lot of it will be because there are significantly more employees that are going into that number.
Well, yeah, there's 367 teachers and 153 TAs.
What I can do is.
Oh, I'm sorry, ESP.
I'm happy to, I can do it either for the next meeting or I can do it for after, as I can explode this out so that we can see it and we can look at it a little more closely.
Or if, I mean, if you wanna follow up with me just.
I'd have to.
I do what you're, I do see what you're saying though, of that it shows very differently as far as the increase for the teachers and the ESP. So I have faith in your numbers, but that is, I do understand that that looks very different, so thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely, I think I can explode it out and then get that to you.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions on the?
It's also different for the other categories as well.
Page as, for employee benefits?
And then, do you, so do you want to go into that worksheet that we were just talking about now? So the some salary page is really just a roll-up of everything that's on that, the next slide, which is the salary breakout.
Just the one thing, I, I know I already asked for, but just to reconfirm, I would like to see the breakout in the stipends and other, and just see like how much is, cause we talked in the meeting that it's, it's stipend, it's court to salaries, it's sub, teacher coverage costs and things like that, so.
Yes.
I'd like to see the breakout.
We don't, we don't want, we don't need people identifiers, but like vast categories, yeah.
So we did talk about that, and I wanted to ask you about that, just so I can make sure I give you the correct data. So in that, I was mentioning that salary document that I have, that kind of explodes everything out, there is an actual tab that filters into that other stipend section. Would you like me to share with you the entire document or just the other salary section, which talks about?
Whatever's easiest for you, I'm just curious to know, like of this 2.5 million dollars, like how much falls into which bucket?
Okay, sure. I will.
We'll just break it down in categories.
Yeah, it, it is broken down in categories in this document and then it rolls up. So, so this particular page, where we're talking about the stipends and the coaching, all that, that rolls up to the line, I believe it's, I don't wanna tell you the wrong thing.
Jen, where, where are you seeing?
On this, on this page.
It's line 53.
All the way down at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm all the way down at the bottom, but it's not, if you look up though, it's salaries is part of that 25, pensions, it's just the other, it's just the other benefit.
Yeah, so the stipends is actually line 52, which is 510,000.
That's all you want broken out, right?
Well, I would like, like you have salaries lumped in there under stipends and others, so like, are those, is that stipend or is that salary?
No, that's the salary number.
So it's, it's a mix of both.
Yes.
There is a mix of both, so that the stipend, so that could be bus monitor salaries that roll into there. There are some ESY salaries, so, so it is both, and that one page will have all of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm just looking to get a breakout of.
More, cause it's about of that number, how much is going to stipends?
I think Jen just wants like some clarity on where, what's feeding into that number.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
And I, and I can, I can certainly get, get you that right away.
You don't, you don't have to say right away, we, by next meeting is.
By next meeting.
No, I'm just saying, like, we wanna be realistic with your time and the current needs of our budget office, as well as what we're, like, I think we are paced well right now, so. Other questions on that page?
I just wanna mention the buyback is in the teachers' contract. As of June 20th, 2010 or earlier, those employees can opt for the buyback option.
Thank you.
So after 2010, that went away.
So, so they can opt out, but they don't get anything for opting out?
Correct. Correct. So on that salvage page, I did wanna just point out one thing, because.
Thank you, Jen.
This was, this was just me not knowing, I know, we had talked about the DEI position originally in my budget documents. I had.
The equity belonging one, that one?
Yes, correct, I had to move it back in because it was as a one-year position, and I put it with the, the top section that says administrator, so it looks like we've added a position. And then down below where it says non-union, it looks like we subtracted a position, I have it.
Oh, it's the same person.
I have it in the wrong area, and I didn't realize that until we had already provided this. So I did wanna just point that out, that we have not added anyone in the administrative office, it's just in the wrong section.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions on this page? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, so we are now into, this is the first department within the actual operating expenditures categories, so we have central admin, and I. So this was originally in prior years, this was a combination of multiple tabs, multiple departments, and I really took a look at what made up the central admin functions and put that in there. So a lot of those, you'll see those professional services at the top, those are district-wise, those are things that we see across the board that really are managed and handled by central admin. But within some of those, like you'll get arbitration negotiations, the substitutes, auditing and legal, there is a lot of flux that comes within that. So as we're looking at this year over year, we just need to kind of keep in mind that there can be a big sway when we're looking at what the administrative budget can look like moving forward.
Questions on this page?
I have two. The first one is, so substitutes contracted services, this is the, like the payments to ESS.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
Correct.
But is charges for substitutes listed anywhere else, right, like teacher coverage or?
So in that, in that salaries and, in that other bucket, we have, there is classroom overages, there is teacher coverage that is listed, that rolls up there, not in this line. So this is purely purchased services that we get from another agency.
And the building subs go, are they under?
ESS.
ESS, okay.
So that would be in this line here.
So the building subs that are hired by the district?
Nope, so the building subs?
Yep.
They are ESS subs.
I thought there were other building subs though.
So we don't have any permanent, do we used to have permanent subs in the building?
So all of the building subs all work through ESS, all of our substitutes work through ESS.
Are they classified as long-term, or are they different every day?
Nope, they, they, there, there are building subs that are at each building.
Yep.
And they work through ESS, and they are, they are a building sub, they're there every single day. They're not long-term, because they're there every day and they fill in for whatever.
I wanna confirm, I believe they have their own rate.
Why aren't they not district employees?
Well, you have to pay benefits.
Cause they're, because, because they are substitutes and it falls under ESS.
I think what Jen's thinking though is like if you had, for lack of a better word, like a swing teacher, that you are like an assistant principal or a whatever, like, that's not the right term, but like, you know what I mean? Like that you know is in the building every day, like, would it be more beneficial just to hire a person that is there consistently versus going through?
We'd have to go through the teachers' union for that.
Yep.
If we're doing it, and then that would be a very different type of employee. Through ESS, ESS does offer them help, offers benefits through ESS.
Got it. So even before COVID, we didn't have, but they were still, do we always use?
I'd have to go back historically and look at that.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
I don't think we used ESS.
Of how that was done.
Yeah, cause I, I feel like I remember.
Well, it's probably at least three or four years, because.
Yeah, but not much longer. What's your, what's your?
Since, five years. Five years.
Yeah.
Till COVID. Cause for some reason, I thought Forest Park had a, my girls was like, before COVID, a permanent building sub who ended up a teacher was out, and like that person became the teacher, but I didn't think she worked for.
It, it may have, but I mean.
But this would have been like, yeah, like 2020.
How that was covered.
I'm just trying to make sure, like, I, like last year's subs was a huge.
Yeah.
Cost, and it was a huge increase, and it's the same thing again, and I, I just wanna make sure that, like, we're accurately capturing what the actual cost of paying these subs is versus, you know, is it better to have some employees, so that we're not, especially when you factor in like the availability of long-term subs and things like that, and I feel like, you know, when we're paying the teachers the overages, like that's not really getting captured, but that is sub in some way, shape or form, right? And so I just wanna make sure we have a clear picture of what all those costs are, so that we can figure out, like, is it real, are we really being cost-effective or aren't we?
Yeah, cause couldn't, cause I mean, the thing, if you had a, if they work for the town, couldn't they go to different buildings?
You're not, yeah, yeah, okay, so we'll note that as some, some additional information to get just as far as getting that call out of the overages, so like when a teacher covers another teacher's classroom, it's in their contract that they get compensated for that, so we'll get that number, and then we can also look at a little bit more maybe detail on the ESS, like what we get from ESS each year. One question I had on that line was not about the long-term sub, like I know that we have the long, that 158884, like most of that is from increasing the long-term sub rate, but when I was looking at the FY25 expenses and looking at what we have budgeted, I was curious if you think, like, we have February, March, April, May, June, and like we're, we're more than halfway to that budgeted amount, and so I was wondering, like, if we had considered, like, are we gonna not hit that budget number this year?
So I have done a projection, and just so that you can kind of see my rational projection, it's one of the appendix tabs at the end. I did a little.
I get that part, that's okay.
I did that projection because there, there are a few instances, and I tried to manually account for this in some areas.
It's great, no, there's no sorry.
So in this, we, the substitute line is one of the lines that we encumber. So for those that don't know, what that means is we have an anticipation of what we think we're gonna spend, and at the beginning of the year, we kind of allocate and we reserve that money, and we create a purchase order and we set it aside, so that we know that that money doesn't go toward anything. We say, we anticipate being at this point, at this point in the year, and we wanna make sure that regardless of what happens, that money is designated and set aside for substitute. So this is one of those lines where this is including encumbrances. So it is, it's overstated for where we are at this point of the year, because we have, I included the encumbrances, cause I wanted to show kind of what we thought we would be, where we would be, and then in that projection, it's where we actually look like we're gonna land. So if you look at this with the encumbrance, it looks like we're gonna be way over. But based on my projection, we'll probably be over somewhere around 30 to 40,000.
Is there a way for like the document just to note that encumbrances are included in that number? You know what I mean? Because like if I'm looking at that and I'm looking at the actual, like, that's not the actual, that's the. Because like if I'm looking at that and I'm looking at the actual, like, that's not the actual, that's the encumbered number, not what we've actually spent on subs.
Yes, and I, I can almost make like a legend at the beginning and I can denote it in some way so that you know which ones.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be, if it's a lot, that's okay, but maybe just a general note of like some of the actuals are encumbered funds, not spent funds or something, you know, just so for people to understand, like, oh gee, because if somebody looked at that like I did, they might think that we're gonna be in big trouble there, but we're not. It's just the encumbered number.
And I can certainly do that and it's not a lot. I did, so in areas specifically to like, when we were talking about special services and we were talking about that reduction in the contracted nursing, I made sure that I specifically put in what our actual was to date. Because if you had looked at what we have encumbered, it's like a hundred thousand dollars over budget. But in my conversations with Dr. Santa, we, we know we're gonna end up releasing a good portion of that. But based on the very beginning of the year, we wanted to be cautious. So if I had put that number in there, the encumbrances, you would have thought we were gonna be a budget buster. So, so I went in and manually adjusted that. I did similar in one of the areas for transportation as well, just because we do encumber our transportation, so I tried to account for that.
Thank you.
Just to answer the question about what a full day, the full day building sub? So a full day, a full day building substitute is the same daily rate as a full day substitute because they're not long-term in one class. They're guaranteed, the difference is they're guaranteed work every single day, they're paid the same as a full day substitute. So there is not a different rate.
What's the daily rate?
One forty-five, this is the current twenty-four, twenty-nine, right? Yep, twenty-four, twenty-five contract.
We missed the first number.
Hundred and forty-five dollars.
That's what we pay that, that's not what we pay E S S, correct?
So that's what they get?
Yep.
We pay E S S one eighty, hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. That's the bill rate. And that'd be by.
Fifty-two weeks?
It's a hundred eighty-four days.
How many weeks do, are we in school?
Forty weeks.
You can do it by one eighty-four because that's what they work.
Oh, one eighty-four days.
I already did it by five.
Just multiply that by one hundred eighty-four days.
So Jen, to give you some context, it's like thirty-four, five-nine-two. That's the cost of like the district, quick, that can be wrong, don't pull into it. But like, if we hired, because we, they're getting benefits through E S S, like if we hired folks, that number would be?
More.
More.
I'm sorry, Jen already had a question, so. No, okay.
Do my math math?
Yeah.
You can do that. All right, other questions on this page?
The district postage, you said something about a new contract was signed and the amounts were higher than anticipated. Did we not know that when we signed it?
So I.
Who signed it?
Our prior C O O.
Great.
Signed it and we, so Chris and I have been working through it because I was not aware of the new contract was signed and that that had to happen. So as I was doing my research and going through, I said, wow, this seems significantly different. We were able to research it, we were able to find the contract and go through it. I've already reached out to them because I have concerns as to why it's so much higher. So my hope is that I'm gonna be able to renegotiate that. But our fiscal twenty-five numbers, they just seem to be trending very high to me, so I was a little surprised, so.
I was curious on. What are we mailing? Like, like I know we mail payroll stuff, like that's just a big number for twenty-twenty-five, like what are, you know what I mean? Like, I know we do payroll documents, but like.
This is postage district-wide. So central admin houses that over, the overall kind of management and making sure that each of the schools can, like all of their items are sent out. So I, I will have to check with the individual schools to find out what they are doing. But that number is not just what comes out of the central admin office. It is district-wide.
I was just like, and maybe it's not high, but like it just seemed, I just couldn't, I couldn't even like imagine what we were mailing, if that makes sense, you know, like I was like, because sometimes I can be like, oh yeah, that makes sense, we're printing stuff for this and whatever, whatever, but I couldn't get to that number.
I think a lot of the different schools, I mean the status, I'm trying what letters come up.
Yeah, I'm trying to think myself too.
Yeah, it's okay.
And the numbers inside are, which is how I arrived at.
I am sure it is a real number, like it's obviously a real number and I'm sure that it's needed, I just couldn't, couldn't even.
No, no.
It's all electronic.
Yes, we can ask them to do it right now.
That's not a high priority, I know that it is what it is, but now I.
And I can give it based on either department or by school. So that you can see there's a particular outlier or something we can identify.
I don't know, they lost me, what's getting mailed? Transcripts.
Transcripts.
Yep.
Yeah.
To the students?
Yeah.
In the mail?
Yes.
I don't get them in the mail.
Well, you don't have a.
I don't have high schools.
Oh, the high schools.
Transcripts, not report cards or.
Oh, okay.
Interesting, okay, well, that's not sixteen thousand dollars.
And from the admin perspective too, we don't mail checks.
Exactly. That adds up quickly.
I'm just thinking, like going back to, I think it's helpful to understand something so then we can make decisions about efficiency. Like you all can make, like there could be some efficiency there or as there's not, like, you know, so find out. Other questions on this page?
Just my last question, so, and I'm just putting this out there as a discussion point. So the conversations around moving the preschool to DA are all predicated upon staying here. Has there been any discussions about looking for a lease elsewhere?
Yes, so I was tasked.
Leslie had her eye on a building.
I did and someone bought it and now they're doing construction and I was so upset. It was a great deal.
Right next to them.
Like honestly, it was a really good deal, so disappointed. But I have, there are very few leasable spaces in North Kingston because obviously we need to stay, it would be a little odd for central admin to be located outside of the district that we are. And, but I, so I have looked, there were available spaces, the rent was significantly higher. And we, you know, I sat down with Quanza and said, listen, you know, this is the situation we're in, this was unexpected. We were not really thinking that that was the direction we were gonna go, how can you work with us? And they have been very good. I mean, our rates were very low because it was two thousand and fifteen. And when I look at, so we did a comparison with, they have a new building across the street and what the rates are going over there. And we were able to come to a compromise and obviously nothing is set in stone. But they said that rather than do a new lease for us, they would do extensions so that we're locked in for three years if we did that. So we'd have this price for the next three years and then we could have an additional three years if we wanted it at a slightly higher rate. But again, that way we could budget accordingly, so they.
And they, I mean, they gave us an option to go across the street to a different space, but that'll cost more.
It's gonna cost more.
Additional work we gotta do which will cost us. I had another idea, but that's not a good idea, so.
I liked his idea.
The one thing that I, and I, I understand that plans need to change and I understand that, you know, like I don't mind that it's evolved since we talked about this last, what I am concerned about though is I hate the leasing of it. Like I, I wish.
I agree.
Like I would rather us buy something and be investing so that the town has an asset at the end of it versus just money into the air, you know, so I think, I get what you're saying that, that this is a good deal and leases, but like six years of just not putting money back into the town just seems.
We will continue to.
Are we able to get out of?
So what they've offered us are their extensions, it's not a new lease, they're offering us in buckets of three. So we'll get, the first extension is one-year extensions for three years locked in and then a second, three, three options to renew, so.
But by year, you could get out of it by year.
Yeah.
And, you know, they've given us options where if we needed to expand, if there's any places that opened up in the building, we would get right of first refusal and we would be able to carry over with whatever existing rate we have now, not the new rate. But I, I agree with you that I think it's something that we should consider.
Yep.
Just based on some of the research with buying the buildings, we could.
Well, I just keep thinking about the conversations that the town side is having. Like they were gonna renovate our, the building that we had left over near the high school. It came in hugely, like I think they had like a big price differential between what they thought it was gonna cost and whatever. And I kept thinking like, okay, we have two different administrative entities that need, in one town that need a home.
You could all go under the roof.
No, that's what I was like, like I was thinking like, the town has an admin issue building-wise right now, we have an admin issue building-wise. Like it's just something to think about long-term, like it just. It's a fancy name for whatever. Government annex, yes.
The N K annex.
No, you know what I mean, like if they're, they're trying to renovate that space, the numbers are coming in.
I'll touch base with you just to let them know that, you know.
Doctor Earl said. No, just, just that we can think about, so what I'm hearing you say, Leslie, is after one year, if we wanted to, we could get out, but we're locking in a rate for three.
Yes, and that is my understanding, again, that thing has been confirmed, that she kind of put something together so that we would have something that we could budget with. And so I know that the rate won't go any higher than what she's giving me for budget purposes, but I will confirm that with them and if not, I will, you know, work to negotiate that and make sure that that's something we can have.
So the twenty-six thousand dollar increase, that's the cost to stay here. Is that all lease or is there something else in that number?
There's one other thing for twenty-eight hundred dollars that's in there. So our, our new lease would be one forty-nine. And that is, part of that increase is we relinquished some offices that we didn't need right now. So our lease for this fiscal twenty-five dropped. But they have rolled those offices in, in the event that we need them, if we don't want them, it might go down.
But we do have people in cubes right now.
So, and, and we have no room to expand in this, so having that office does allow us some flexibility.
Any other questions on this page? I just want to be conscious of time, we have like ninety pages left.
What is that ten thousand under arbitration negotiation, is that legal services?
It is legal services, but I separated it out because we're going through two different contract negotiations. We do code it differently for uniform chart of accounts, so I wanted to identify and give it its own line.
What are we, oh, that would just be arbitrations, we don't have any negotiations next year unless we?
It is for, so in my notes I put if, if we have any carryover, which hopefully we do not, from negotiations this year and arbitrations.
But teacher.
And we have the teachers' negotiation next year, actually.
So for the arbitrations and the negotiations this year, like it says, like we budgeted, like I know you're splitting it out, but it looks like we budgeted nothing and spent seven-eight, seven-five.
Right, so right now that would be part of the three hundred thousand that's budgeted for legal, so what I can do.
Could you break out that too, just so it looks like apples to apples?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page? For, for links, that's an expense that we just, it's a flat B.
It's a flat B.
And they, and that's for them to process our B C I's and, and what else? What are we paying twenty thousand dollars for, I guess is what I'm asking.
My, no, my understanding is that it's for, for all of that, exactly that, it's for B C I's. But I can, I can pull an invoice and I can see what's detailed in the back.
That'd be great.
But it's been consistently the same amount for.
Because they track all of it too.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I, I can certainly pull that and provide that information.
That'd be great, thank you. Not that, I'm saying we wouldn't, I'm just curious, like what, what's in there that they, that we're paying for? Other questions on? This page? Nope.
Okay. Okay, so did I hear no questions on assistant superintendent and P D? You are off.
I think just for the furniture and fixtures on that five-seven-three-oh-six line, just to note that, that twenty-twenty-five, that's the fifty thousand dollars that we're not anticipating spending this fiscal year, that would go into overage, that then would get reallocated into that to make it a hundred.
Which line, I'm sorry, which one are you on?
The one that you had explained earlier, fixed furniture and fixtures under general admin. We had fifty thousand budgeted.
Correct.
We haven't spent any of it, but the, and so we only have fifty thousand budgeted for if we do the pre-K move, but it's actually a hundred because we anticipate rolling that over or, or having some of the costs.
If we can do some of the costs this fiscal year, then we certainly will.
Right, because then we'll actually spend it this year.
Spend, and then start again.
Yes, so that, that, those two lines are like that part of, like that's what we were talking about earlier.
And, and just if we're thinking kind of down the road, since this is now something that we're in our second year of budgeting this, might be something that we want to consider keeping a line item for moving forward so that we do have that buffer as we're going through capital improvements and we're doing different things, we might need. Those, those are funds that we might want to consider having as we go through the next five-year plan with our bond. Just in case.
Okay, other questions, any questions on the next page?
Just to draw this with something that, it was raised at the budget finance meeting where our community member, the school committee budget, like of the, of the increase in the technical services, that's my understanding for software, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we are, the current software is sunsetting, so we need to replace it. And based on what will work for the school committee, the, the new software, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of it.
Granicus.
Granicus, came in at a higher rate, so that's what that, that increases almost entirely, that software.
For that, okay. And then what's the difference between board training and professional fees and dues?
So there, there was a specific line for training that comes in for new board members, my understanding. And then fees and dues are any miscellaneous things that I know we've had to pay for, there was.
Yeah. For that school, yeah, so Jen, so the, the professional fees and dues is the membership in R I A S. And then the five thousand dollars is, they charge for the training that we went to the long, the seven hours for the P D hours, so that is that one, so.
Now, if that's something that you don't do, if, if that's not something that happens every year, we can certainly, you know, make an adjustment. But if, I, I would hate to take it out and then have it be something that you need.
Isn't every other?
Yeah, the board.
Well, no, if that's the, if that's the school committee one-on-one that we went to, that's every year.
Is it every year?
Yeah, because we have to do six hours of professional development.
Yeah, yeah, Josh is nodding, Jameson is nodding as well.
And I know that it's something and it's happened and we've paid for it, one of the things you'll notice it has zero across the board because it, it's been rolled into other items. And so by me putting, trying to offset it, it was gonna throw off what our actual budget line item was for you.
The point was raised, like just, you know, we should be looking at our expenses when we're looking at everything else, so I just wanted to address that.
But the one we went, I went to for the trust, that's just part of being, part of that.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, yes, correct.
For the advertising, um, for school committee advertising, what, would that be like when we put an ad in looking for?
For any time you put ads into the newspaper.
Yep.
Anytime we break it was.
So why don't we have any expenses for that?
I'm just wondering, I was just listening.
Because again, the school committee, but it was rolled up into one line
Got it.
in the past, so I've tried to break it out and really identify where the money was being spent. But a lot of that was put into your professional fees and dues.
All right, so the, the breakout of expenses might not be a hundred percent accurate.
Correct, and then there were other areas where, when I went through to look at the budget, like I noticed, oh, they might need a catering line or there might be, you didn't have a materials and supplies line, but there are obviously materials and supplies that you have, so.
So you broke this out more for future, so as we proceed this year and next year, we'll actually see what those actual costs are.
That makes sense. Any questions regarding that? And if we, just to clarify, if we did not have that software, like, because if people say, oh, the school committee, you know, like, if we don't have that software, what happens, Chaz?
There will be no way for us to build agendas in a software, it'll be a Google Doc.
We'll have Google Doc agendas, okay. And we have to make this change.
By September.
Yeah, like it's, we don't have a choice.
No choice.
Okay.
Wasn't it too, the videos are gonna be like more organized?
Then the, what's there is it just the agenda?
This is the cool part.
Yeah, the, we're still exploring the exacts, but it'll be, we're also exploring the, the live streaming indexing and all of that.
So this is just agendas?
Correct. That's the, that, that is the specific need, the.
Oh, yeah, yep.
I just, I, like to Jen's point, I would want to cut anything that, like we wouldn't want the school committee having extra costs when we're making cuts out of their places, but this is like for the public to have transparency on agendas and being able to organize the minutes and all of that sort of stuff.
Yeah, we come onto our curriculums and firm, literally as long as we can.
All right, Chaz says we have to do it, is my idea. Anything on the next page? Also, if, if we want to take a five-minute recess, spend two hours if people need to use the restroom, or folks can just get up and go and then come back, totally up to you all. Any preference? Just keep pushing and if people need to get up and take breaks individually, okay. Same for admin if you need a break. Leslie, would you like a break?
No, Emily.
Because you don't actually get to just walk out, so. Sure, we can take a five-minute.
I'm done, I'm done.
Five minutes?
I'm okay right now.
Okay, if you change your mind, please let us know, we're happy to take a recess. Anything on the next line? This is the professional and curriculum development one.
If, if I can just make a statement on this, this one was one of the ones where it was kind of oddly combined with our curriculum, not oddly, I mean it all goes together, but. kind of oddly combined with our curriculum, not oddly, I mean, it all goes together, but I really wanted to separate it out, so you'll notice there's a lot of pluses and minuses that are happening and it's really just adjusting where the things are coming out of. So you'll see, oh, it looks like a big decrease, but then it increases someplace else and so it's a net zero change. So just know that that happened a lot on this particular document, because I really wanted to represent where the items are being built and should be being built up.
So for example, the PD wellness one, that is the money that we allocated to the, the employee wellness committee.
Yes.
That wasn't listed like this previously, so any expenses that they have probably aren't accurately reflected.
Correct. It was previously listed in part of the fiscal line under dentists. I'm not sure why.
Did you say dentist?
Dentists, yes. So-
Because, so-
Someone's on wellness.
Yes, exactly.
But also too, that request came in after we were doing the budget, and so I know last year we were looking to see where was the money going to come from.
I don't think the request came in, but I think it got to us after.
Yes, and, and in, in all fairness, the dentist line is under like student and then staff health. Like, it's a big bucket that-
Honestly, honestly, it, I get why it would go there in, in theory, and so it's not as silly as it sounds.
We've heard that one separate now under PD.
Yep, no, I like that a lot, yep. Any other questions regarding this? Are we in here?
Good.
Okay.
So the new curriculum for the middle school is not in here?
It is not in here. So in conversations, we, after we met with the budget and finance, so understanding that that was something that was a district goal, we originally had it in that first document, and then when we were really looking through it, it's not something that has to happen next year. So we opted to keep some other important things and critical things in that budget that we would like to roll out right away, and the recommendation is to move it to fiscal twenty-seven.
Okay, okay. And that's the same thing for the other books, the pre-calc and the AP stats, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. How often do those things, like, how often do we have to do like a major curriculum upgrade?
Every curriculum area is on cycle for every six years, for every year. I mean, right now, we're kind of a little bit behind because of COVID and wait for the state to come out with different standards. Social studies just came out, but they're, it is not due till, I could look it up, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, they're not, they just redid the standards. So we're kind of ahead of the game when we were trying to adopt, I think slowing down, slowing down the piloting for next year to a full-year pilot, rather than try to pilot this spring and adopt, is probably a, a smart thing to do. There's a lot of changes at the middle level in the social studies standards, especially seventh grade, so. Yeah, so every six years, we, we, we look at, are the standards have been adjusted, or do we need a new curriculum, what is, what is ideally telling us and then? But right now, we're still following under the, keeping in line with the high-quality initiative and right down line for science and social studies doesn't have a deadline.
Okay, just because like a hundred and twenty is a lot, right? And I know that we had moved some purchases this year, like out of the budget into ESR. And so I'm just wondering, as we move forward, like, and we look, like, in theory to like capital funding, like, should we have a line in there for curriculum?
I, I do think that it makes sense because it is going to be constantly evolving, and if we get these state mandates that are unfunded and we need to be able to be prepared and, and not push it out till the last possible minute, we want to be able to adopt over time. I do think that that makes sense.
And we've staggered when those six years come out, so it makes sense to have a bucket of money so that we're buying something new every year for one curriculum area. That's generally what happens.
Yeah, because right now, there isn't even like a line for it, so we might want to consider that.
And there's other areas too, I think, not just curriculum that we, we need to look at within our budget that we know there's going to be areas of need over a single year, so it's built in there. And then also, when we look at the updated fund balance document and what is assigned, not assigned, we can look in that area too.
Yeah, just putting that out there as a discussion point.
Jody, do you think that it might also be a good idea to put a line item in about state mandated professional development? So for instance, like we had the right to read in the last couple of years, but then we have this MLL coming down, and if we've got the curriculum that we're going to have to budget for in addition to the MLL, PD, I'm, I'm just trying to think of like anybody else.
It's going to be a cost if there's no funding behind it, so it is something we should-
And I would assume that we're going to have to pay something. I would assume, especially at this point with our state, they're not going to cover every single district, every single teacher in full.
Do we know how much it costs us to do retrograde?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I took, it was all in ESR and I'll get asked that.
It was your question. It was your question. It was, I wanted to know how much it costs to do retrograde.
Because it was both a platform fee plus the stipends we had to pay out for a PD above and beyond the school day and our, our contractual hour, so it was, it was quite a big cost.
I don't know, it was expensive.
No, I can, I can go back and look it up.
I want to say I'm two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I'll take that, that's good enough. I was going to say two hundred and fifty.
And it's also something we can look to see if we can somehow deal with another district, because when I was in Jamestown, we were paying NK to send some of our teachers to the NK cohort. So we can see as we move forward, if we can get a discount by working regionally with some of the districts.
Yeah, and I just mention it because I have to assume that this isn't, these are going, these mandated PDs are probably going to keep coming, just like the change in curriculum every year.
And then we have to figure too, like, when is it going to happen, and, you know, we, we have to provide stipends to teachers, because now it's professional development that's required outside of the workday. And we only have four PD days built into the year.
Any other questions? So we're piloting the middle school social studies, that's what that cost is, correct? The twenty-three.
So that is the, the books that we, there were some textbooks that we left in at the high school level, is it?
No, this is, oh, that's high school, middle school, got you.
Honors, yeah.
Honors, US history, honors, US history. And one of the things, so we did take out AP Calc and we left the history, but the cost for them is relatively similar, so if they came back and said, no, we actually need the calc more than we need the US history, we can switch, we can switch it out and get them what they need.
Got it.
Are those actual physical textbooks or are there's mostly online?
Physical textbooks. It's very rare, these two pages.
I know, I, that's the reason I asked.
They're very rare in that, in that social studies, so, yep.
Any other questions on this page? Okay, let's go to the next one. Student services.
Student services.
Something, Leslie, could we just note, like, previously called, yeah, just for folks, I was thinking about it in that first line, like, if you just saw a student services line, like, just designating, at least just for this year, like, previously budgeted under whatever it used to be called.
Do you want, can I do, are you okay with me putting PPS or would you like pupil?
I would spell it.
I would spell it out, yeah. People.
People personnel services. It changed as soon as I started.
Yeah, yeah, just so like, sure, so people know what that is.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Questions regarding this one?
Just, you know, anywhere where you see decreases, that's because it's based on student need and those services not required anymore. Or if there's an increase, it's because services are increasing based on students.
So like personal care attendant, is it just more kids are needing that?
Additional and, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I have a general question on this. Doctor Shesky-
So she's, she had to step out. She's here in the building.
Okay, you could probably help me with this.
I could possibly answer it.
Yeah, and if not, you know, it's not a big deal, but in general, with, it seems like we're doing a lot with our people personnel services program, programming?
Student services.
Um, right, thank you. Programming, and I'm wondering, do you have any projections as to whether or not we are going to be able to offer programming that maybe we didn't have otherwise, so that students had to go out of district? And like, in other words, are there programs that are going to bring students back to the district?
So we, we would like to expand some of our programs. Right now, our budget cannot allow that to happen without us making some other staff changes to allow that to happen. As we add those additional programs, continuum of programs, that will allow us to keep students in. However, there are times when even with these programs, we still need to look for a more restrictive specialized program for students. And sometimes it balances out. So I know right now, they're working with some students and families that are in district that may be out, and there's students that are out of district that are coming in. So sometimes it just balances off that cost. Sometimes we might see a decrease, sometimes we might see an increase. It's very hard to predict how many students will have to have to go out of district, because students could move in as well that need a more restrictive placement. But as we are increasing that continuum, that will allow us to keep more students in districts, and it's more cost-effective for us to be paying for staffing than paying individual tuitions and transportation.
So similar question then, that would also help us bring other students potentially from out of district if we offered other services?
So for example, with the program at DA that was intended to also be a tuition-winning program for other districts. We don't have a magnet, I think that is very low of how many students we, I think.
I'm sorry.
It's a number of students that-
I was too busy thinking of stuff, and I'm not going to-
Sorry, that's a stupid, can't be distracted.
I'm sorry. Okay, very distracting, so you're person distracted.
We don't have many tuitions that are coming into us right now for special education programs, but we could offer that. One program that Dr. Santa was talking about was the Project Search program. That we can budget that in, it will cost us to bring in a teacher. She has found a way to cover the job coach portion with current staffing we have. But there would be a cost for the teacher.
And that's not in this budget?
However, that's not in this budget. However, that service now can be offered to other districts around us and we would get a tuition coming in. Tuition would not offset, the tuition may or may not offset the cost of the teacher.
Or project reach.
But we would be, which, which revenue for us.
You guys said that very badly.
So, okay, I, I was just wondering, obviously not for this budget cycle, but you do, there are plans in the works, hopefully, to expand and then be able to maintain or keep our students if possible, and then bring in other.
That is what we've got to do this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question about year-to-date expenses for psychologists and contracted services.
Yes.
We seem like really low year-to-date compared to the budget.
So this was one of the ones where I was talking about where I manually updated as opposed to encumbered.
Okay.
Because when you look at it, it looks skewed either way.
Okay.
So for the psychologist in particular, the billing is slow on that. But I, I also thought it was unrealistic to put the encumbered amount because it just, it, it didn't make sense. So specifically for that one, we, we get, we almost have to request invoices for that.
January, you know, like, that's like-
Yes, so we have to request it and then we'll get a big bucket and then it will go through.
So what, are we just basing that, so you're, but I'm assuming, because you, you probably projected out to see where we were going to hit with the numbers, and you think it'll hit around two-sixteen next year?
Yes, and, and in conversations with Dr. Santa, she agrees, just based on the need and what we think, that comfortably, we think that increase is sufficient.
And these are things?
And same with contracted services, that I put in the real number because I, it was so overregulated.
And what, what is the bucket for contracted services here?
So that's like our momentum maxim, it's primarily what we use for teaching assistants if we can't fill the position.
Okay.
Those are, and we have some nurses as well, so contracted nurses as well.
Is it possible on that line just to do contracted services and then maybe just parentheses with, like, you, you did that in some other areas, like where they were like examples of categories, just to give folks an idea, because sometimes contracted services in my brain doesn't mean individual people coming in, you know what I mean? And what you just described makes a lot of sense. Any other questions regarding this one? And I think Megan's point about the revenue, you know, at, at DA, like, I think that's the long-term goal. It was always the long-term goal, but obviously with administrative turnover and trying to kind of get our feet back under us in that program. But that's something we definitely, I think, for future fiscal years, that we can look at. Next page, any questions?
So this one has lots of big numbers, so I fully anticipated a lot of questions.
Oh, I'm on the little page.
Oh, you're on the IT.
Like the final-
We have like one little.
Oh, there's a second page?
Yep.
Oh, I'm looking at it on the computer.
Are you looking at IT already?
I wasn't because I don't have a second page.
Any questions on the, this little printed one? I was impressed that you got all them on, almost, I think this is the only one that has two pages and they all fit when you printed them. That's probably a lot.
I did, it was so small that I just didn't think that was realistic.
You did a great job. Okay, so hearing no questions on that one, we can move on to information technology page.
This is the one where I anticipate a lot of questions.
Really?
I already asked all of them.
Okay, next.
Do you want to just clarify? Could you just clarify for the public, the fifty, five-hundred thousand dollar increase on that lot, the hardware replacement line?
So that is made up of, I believe, three, and Chaz is here, he can go into significantly more detail, but I have a small, like in our little cheat sheet document that I gave everybody. So what we've remained, this was originally, this line item was about seven hundred thousand, so we have cut it down considerably.
Chaz, like, it could be way higher than that, if you wanted it to.
And it was, we did. So right now, what's included are Chromebooks, which, correct me if I'm wrong, grades six through eight, is that?
It's, it's one, six, and nine, but three grades, yes.
So three grades for Chromebooks at two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. We are in desperate need of admin laptops, which have been pushed off, I believe, two budget cycles. And I was joking earlier that I was going to leave my laptop unplugged, so that when it died in the middle of the budget meeting, I would have a reason. But I didn't, I kept it plugged in. We, we need about sixty thousand, but for this, we cut it in half and we'll do half next year and then hopefully half the year after, so that's thirty thousand in the budget. Then we have that VX rail replacement that we talked about earlier, which is a hundred and fifty thousand. We have a replacement unicorn, which is camera servers, that's eighty-five hundred, and another, the DA server replacement for ten thousand. So that's what makes up the majority of that number, and I don't, if, if, we have Chaz here if he wants to go into detail of why we need those items.
Yeah, honestly, most of them are just end of life or pretty dang close. And we're trying to, some of them, like the camera equipment, are trying to slowly, again, not do all of that in one bulk. Some of it can live a little bit longer, so we're trying to get this on to a slower, more normalized cycle. That's why that ask, so that'll probably be one you'll see every year.
So something, like, why, why wouldn't we put this stuff under cap, this is like, is IT not capital? Like, it's, you know what I mean? Like, it seems to me-
It is.
Yeah.
But it's, so, so we have, you can look at it both ways. I mean, a lot of what is in here is stuff for daily operational use. So it's, it's, you have to kind of make a decision as a district of how you want to address it, and historically, we've looked at it operationally in this respect, and that's how it was funded in prior years, so that's how we've done it, but it's certainly something that we can talk about, we consider, can consider, because it does change how it is funded. If, if we have it as capital. And some of these larger expenses, like we're talking about, where it's these servers that do have a longer life and we've, we've just happened to reach now in this budget cycle that we're at the end of life, if that's considered capital, how it's funded, it's not something that has to impact our unrestricted fund.
What happened to the old Chromebooks?
So, uh-
Did they go to auction?
So, uh, we, we, we're exploring that. I'm not expecting much from a five-year-old Chromebook, but, uh, but, but pretty much what we actually do is a lot of the individual parts, not all of them-
You steal the parts, yeah.
Will carry over to the new devices. So we, we salvage and scrap those things down to every last thing we can. We actually still have screens from last year's seniors, for example. So like, we get, we get down to everything we can, we make use of it. Yeah, right to the bone. And then whatever we can't use, some of the ones we get back are just devastated, so we can't use anything with those, but most of them are, are in good condition.
Okay, thank you. So kind of to Eric's point, like, if you look at the hardware in twenty-twenty-three, it was big, and then twenty-four and twenty-five, we bought stuff out of ESR, right? And that's why it's missing here. And so that kind of goes to like the point of, you know, do we want to also have an allocated line in our capital budget for this, so that like some of these big ones, like especially that, whatever the rack server, whatever you call that thing, like, it comes out of that versus coming out. And I, I understand the reappropriation of the five-hundred thousand, like, to cover it, because like, it, it definitely is a lot, but I think we have, I, I think moving, I, I don't think we did a great job, like, saying we're going to take this stuff out of our budget and pay with it ESR and then have a plan for reappropriating it back in. And so I think, like, moving forward, where we know we have these ongoing big expenses, we might want to consider that, so that we're not trying to absorb it each time.
And I, I will say, just because you pointed out the twenty-twenty-three where you have that large number, in my research, so this is, this is the amount that I can verify came out of the unrestricted fund, but if you look at what we actually did, I believe it was high school, there were computers or Chromebooks that were bought at the high school, so the actual number was like seven hundred thousand, but we were able to, I think it was paid with, go ahead.
Yeah, it was the, it was the interactive boards. The first year we started rolling out the inner, uh, the new interactive TVs rather than the old smart boards.
So, so some of that, again, was in ESR, so that, if you think of what that, it was even bigger number than what's in there.
And that might be something like when we're explaining to the town, like, needs and things like that, like, those are the sort of things that I think will be helpful to point out, is that we were, like, it wasn't nineteen and forty, like, it was much higher than that. You know, like, I think, they understand ESR on a- You know, like I think they understand Essar on a big level, but like I think those line item things are important because it looks like there wasn't a needed, but there was and there will always be. And so I'm gonna ask a question because students ask me a lot, Chaz. They don't love the Chromebooks and they want Macs or something that works better. No, I'm just saying, like, and I try to always escalate student voice and like they, that, you know, like I'm so, I'm so grateful that we're able to give students technology and that we're able to eliminate that barrier for students, but also like the end user, which is the students, often express displeasure about that. So I know that you're probably looking at it from a financial standpoint and that's probably the best that we can afford. But just wanted to say it to give the students voice because they do talk about it to us a lot.
Do we get the older students too? Because I feel like the elementary school kids.
Are just really excited to have it. No, not necessarily that, but like, you know, they're not, like, sometimes they're slower than what they're probably used to if they have personal devices.
Yeah, what I can say is at the last, as of like last year, for example, we used to just go with the raw base model possible. We did, in COVID, we ran into a couple of issues with especially everything being remote and the pressure it put on those. So like as of last year was our first year that we went up one.
Okay, so I can say to them, you've got a little bit of a nicer Chromebook.
Yeah, so that way, one set of, yeah, so nine hundred of the students have the slightly newer one. But that'll be part of it, because we did notice that too. As everything moves web-based, it does tax some, yeah, so.
Okay, just wanted to say it.
We think about it, we really do, we really do consider it.
And there's no possibility for leasing? Like we don't like that option, like.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know if it's in there, but I did do a breakdown of it.
I have a complete analysis that he did.
You lucked it in, I saw you lucked it in.
Yeah, I did, yeah. I'm glad someone's looking at it, because yeah, I wanted to get it more accurate because I did get pricing on it and it, I think it made it worse.
Yeah.
No, that's great. I just wanted, just that it's a big number, like just making sure we're doing our due diligence. Any other questions on this?
Jen, I just want to point out too, when you were talking about the nineteen thousand for last year, we actually had three hundred thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks. That was at the end of Essar three.
Yeah.
That we put at the very end of the year. So that number is really three hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
Moving on to the next page for facilities?
Can I just ask one question, just as I'm going through this and we're thinking about future things, like, so based on this conversation, in my understanding that there's nothing that we want to change in this right now, or is this, you want me to investigate this more with him for our next workshop? For our next conversation? Just because this was.
I mean, it sounds like it is what it is if we can afford it. Like, it's not like, like it sounds like you've done a very nice job exploring all different options, looking at it in different angles and that you whittled it down to what you think is the bare minimum needs for the technology.
These are the needs, I, these are.
I'm not saying we can fund it, but I'm just saying like, it sounds like, I don't think I need anywhere in there if I need.
No, you did, you just did.
Just to make sure.
No fun toys on this one, unfortunately, maybe in future.
Chaz, like if you'd like to see that list, though, it does exist.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then just to go back, and maybe it's somewhere else and I missed it. Ken, when you were talking about the like security stuff?
Yes.
That's tech stuff, is that anywhere in here or is that not budgeted right now?
So the cameras are under.
Transportation.
Okay, well, those ones, yeah.
And then the.
What about the?
Yeah, the badges.
The Raptor badge system, we.
So I don't have it in here only because I wasn't sure if that was something, I know that there is a line item on our fund balance, but specifically for safety and security. And it was, there was dollars allocated to that. And I thought that perhaps that was something we could use those dollars.
No, yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a sense of like what's in, what's not in.
That's not in there because I did identify another funding source.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll see that in a different way. That's helpful, thank you. Moving on. Facilities.
Chris, you're lucky, dude. He's ready, he's ready.
So. Vehicle repairs, did we never budget for that or are we just calling it out in a different way?
It was in a different line, I know. And that's one where I really want to start tracking it because they have, we have specific expenses that go to that.
That was one of the questions I had. You said that they were more expensive, we changed mechanics and as a result, pricing has increased.
That's for our buses. That's for, that's for transportation, sorry.
These are like vans and trucks and stuff?
These are, yeah, these represent the fleet that the maintenance guys use on a daily basis.
How many of a fleet do we have? I've never heard that number before. No, I know the bus fleet.
It's a.
There's another fleet.
It has been reduced over the past three years by five vehicles, who we have yet to replace any of those vehicles. So we are about on razor's edge with regard to those vehicles. As the total number of vehicles reduces, the ones that we do have get used more. And that's why we're gonna be tracking the repair expenses far more than we have in the past, or at least in a more specific manner.
To see if we're spending more on repairing.
Oh, I guarantee you we're gonna be spending more. Guarantee it.
And that's identified in the fifty-four, three, one, two line, which is fifty-six in the document, which we will have the lines. But almost all the way at the bottom, Maintenance or Repair Services General, that additional sixty-four thousand is accounting for the fact that we have and we anticipate more repairs to those vehicles. But not just what would fall under, according to UCOA, a vehicle repair, if that makes sense.
That's, yeah, and just for our purposes.
Yes.
I know yours.
So it's two different, so the amount of money we're spending kind of falls into buckets when we're talking about the maintenance and the repair that we have to do on those vehicles. For paint supplies, kind of looking at the number that we have spent in FY twenty-four and then what we've spent so far in FY twenty-five. Not sure if that's an actual or a.
Which one, Eric?
Paint, paint supplies?
That's.
It looks like we're coming under eleven thousand dollars a couple of times, so just wanted to.
I do, I.
Are we painting some stuff?
Yes, so one of the requests that came in was to, I always get it wrong, it's either the gym or the auditorium, one of them.
It was gymnasium. They have asked to repaint both gymnasiums in the high school.
Yes, to repaint them. So that, I kept that number so that we could accommodate that request. From the athletics department.
Correct.
Yes.
The repainting of those two gymnasiums is beyond our capability as a facilities group. And we could do it, but it would take a Mother Sunday.
And so this is one of those, we've accounted for it in there, but more than likely, we would have to have a conversation because if we do have to hire someone, it would, well, and it would fall under a different category because then it's a purchase service. So this is to account for if we do it ourselves and if it's beyond and we have to outsource.
That's different, that's contractual services.
Yeah, exactly.
Electricity.
Is that just the increase in cost?
That's exactly right. We applied a twelve percent increase. We did some research and we thought a twelve percent increase was middle of the road because it could get far worse than that. I mean, look at your electricity bill that you get at home. And multiply that by the amount of electricity we spend.
Mine's partly because we don't ever turn anything on. No, it's okay. No, I actually do have a question about that, though. Like with, I drive by the schools a lot and like the fields and we leave the lights on in a lot of the buildings, a lot. Like, do we ever track, like, to that level of usage?
There are some, actually, a lot of the buildings.
Like if my work, there's stickers everywhere that says, please turn out the lights, or like, you know, like there's things like that?
There are sections of the building that stay on all the time for security reasons. A lot of the buildings have the automatic turn-off switches. The athletic fields at the high school, that's what you're referring to?
That is one that always bothers me, yes.
Yeah.
And maybe it turns off really late, but I've been there.
They are pre-programmed. They're pre-programmed based on the schedules of the athletics. Now, if the football team or the rec soccer or somebody else leaves that field early, unfortunately, the lights stay on until they said they're gonna need.
They said they're gonna be there until eleven PM.
Right, they bail out at nine thirty and there you have it.
Yeah. So we think we're doing our best to reduce these costs.
We could always improve. We could always improve.
Also, keep in mind that within this number is the solar credits that we pay to the town and for those that are unfamiliar. So there, there are solar that the town has, we receive the credits on our bills. And then that offset is then paid to the town, so it's reconciled between the town and our business office so that we make sure that the credits that are actually coming in on those bills are in fact what match with the town's receiving or should be receiving for their solar. And then we reimburse the town for those credits and that has to be factored into this number, so that.
Why isn't that in revenue somewhere, then?
It's not revenue for us, it's revenue for them, it's an expense for us.
No, I understand that, but it sounds like we're getting the money in and then we're giving it to the town?
No, we get a reduction on our bill. So the credit shows up as a reduction on our bill, we pay the bill and then we pay the credits to the town. And that was an arrangement that was made many years.
Can I see this? Do we have that documented somewhere? That arrangement?
I have some.
I would love that.
I have some basic information.
Great, perfect.
But it's basically for our buildings.
Somehow the schools are involved in it. The schools, my understanding, the schools had to be involved in order for the town to get the rebates.
And it's a twenty-five-year agreement.
And so the rebate comes on our electric bills, not the town's electric bills.
Oh, so like.
So we have to budget for the full cost of electricity to run our school buildings. Our electrical, our electric bill is reduced by the solar credit rebate. We pay, we budget for the full amount and then what, we pay the electric bill that's reduced and then the other part of our electric budget, we pay back. We send a check to the town.
So we're actually getting the town's credit on our bill, they're not getting it on their.
They don't get it, but we essentially.
On their bill, they're actually paying a higher amount.
Can we have that out on a separate line? So could we have an electricity usage line and then a solar credit line?
Yes.
Just to, just to track it and be transparent about it?
I can certainly do that, especially too, since one of the reasons why that number seems even higher than just the percentage is because our solar credit last year came in higher than we had budgeted.
Oh, super fun.
Yes, and just so you have an idea that it was about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
You were gonna say disgusting number. Nope, 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 I'm gonna, I can handle that in my brain.
Well, we each pay our own separate electric, right, I'm getting this. So it's just, basically, they don't want to.
So basically, what needs to be noted, when we make our budget request to town.
They're getting a portion back.
Yes.
Understood. We have, we should explain that clearly to them.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars, actually, which is ironically the same amount that we're taking out of our original budget. Okay, yeah, so if we can split that out, I think that's just going for transparency.
The electricity purchasing contract that we signed, what did that do for us?
I've tried it in here.
The electricity purchasing contract?
The town one?
No, we signed one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I believe that contract has expired as of November.
We did.
Was this the electricity, the brokerage, the electricity broker that we?
Yeah, we did it since I've been on the school committee, so in the last two years, we did something and Jen will find it for you.
Well, in May of twenty twenty-two, we signed a four-year, a four-year deal. And then we did do another thing because I remember being on the stage.
That to lock us into electrical costs?
So it's essentially a broker, so what they do is they search for the lowest delivery rates that we can get and then we get those rates.
It's like a whole thing.
That was four years ago.
It was not four years ago. It was two years ago at max.
So we did have one.
No, no, it's okay, I just was there, so.
We do have one for natural gas that was recently renewed with NRG.
No, this, I'm looking right at a school committee approval of electricity purchasing contract, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and we entered into a four-year commitment.
That is unknown to me at this point.
Okay, we'll clear that.
And I'll find what we did, because we were in the high school stage.
Yep, yeah, maybe. Let's keep going. Any other questions?
About the snow removals. So in years, and I'm gonna say this and then we're gonna get the biggest blizzard of our lives.
It's supposed to snow tonight.
Oh, no.
Just a tease.
Okay, anyway, in years where we don't use what we've had allocated or we don't use as much, if, if we have like a big chunk left over that we don't have to put directly towards the next year's budget, where do we then allocate or reallocate that money that we haven't used?
We traditionally have allocated fifty thousand dollars for snow removal. Two years ago, it came to, I believe, forty-three thousand dollars, so it was pretty darn close. Last year, we barely had a dusting once or twice, so we had a fair amount of money left over. It is my belief, correct me if I'm wrong, that that money was allocated to different facility-related projects, things that we might have underbudgeted.
I literally remember sitting here and Mike telling me, it didn't snow, so we're gonna spend it on next. What he said, I keep it in my head, he was sitting here, I do not remember what he said, and then we were joking about what you just were joking about. But I don't, it got reallocated to something.
Okay, so that's what you do, you just reallocate it.
So we do have one other thing that we could do, and it's just an idea that we can think about moving forward, is that you can do specifically with something like snow removal, is if you do have a year where you have, instead of allocating it to that fiscal year, you can take that money and you can put it into what's called a restricted account. So then that money doesn't, if you have a surplus at the end of the year, that money doesn't roll to fund balance. It stays within a restricted snow removal line so that the next year, you have that money.
In case you have a bad year.
I don't think, I don't, I mean, based on historical trends, I don't know if that's the one, there's lots of things we should do that for and I don't know if it's.
Good question.
It's just another option. We're doing now, we're signing it, we'll do.
I had a question about rubbish disposal. With composting now, is there a cost? Like I know we have the grant for the composting right now, but like in theory, wouldn't we be throwing, is, how is the trash number, I guess? Do we pay by?
We pay by the school. We pay by the school. How many dumpsters do we have at each school? So each school has an assigned dollar value per contract that we pay on a monthly basis.
So it doesn't act as less trash in the.
But is there a possibility that we could do?
The number of pickups we get?
I'm sorry?
Can we change the number of pickups, so instead of them picking up?
Well, then you're on the risk of a full dumpster for three or four days and that's not an attractive proposition.
Less dumpsters? I guess what I, here, let me re-say my question.
Is that, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, I was, but hopefully we could do less dumpsters because I think most schools probably don't.
Only have one.
I think as we gain, we find as this program goes on and we see what the savings are, it's really hard for us to say now. So we want to make sure we're budgeting for it just in case we don't have the savings we want. But I think as that program continues, we can get a better handle on what we're saving. And then I think that's an opportunity for Chris and I to reevaluate that contract and how we pay for it.
Which would make sense.
And we don't pay for recycling, right?
No, that's, that's all within the, it's all part of the contract. Each school has a trash receptacle and then a recycling receptacle. It's a mixed recycling.
Oh, yes, I know.
With the exception of the high school, which has a cardboard only and a mixed recycling.
Okay.
Also, just to add to this, within the last two months, I've received from our friends at MEGA Disposal a proposition to install a thirty-yard trash compactor at the high school and get rid of three of the four dumpsters that are there. It's, it's not an efficient manner in which we're throwing stuff away out there. So there would be some upfront costs with regard to wiring it electricity-wise, but we would park that compactor thirty yards. It looks like about a thirty-yard dumpster that's enclosed right on the loading dock there.
Is there any benefit, again, and maybe talking with the town about like a shared cost on something like that? Like if, I don't think we have a trash musher in town. Like maybe at the, maybe at the, you know what I mean?
What do you mean a shared cost? Like, they're not gonna throw their stuff in our dumpster and.
Oh, so this would be, it's not just, so it is compacting it and then it goes off?
Right, they compact it, they squish it all in there for three to four weeks.
Oh, got you, got you, got you. Nevermind.
And then they haul it away, dump it and bring it right back and plug it back in.
Got it. I was thinking it was different.
Okay.
So ignore it.
The, can I just make a comment about the, using with the fund balance and having restricted lines? You know, just, just we've mentioned about the snow removal, having that possibly there. But the comment I want to make is that every year, the school committee has to reassign everything. So if you have snow as an example, it could be something else. If there is a large amount left in that line, you then have the ability each year to say, oh, you know what? All right, we have an excess in snow removal, we don't need it, we can reallocate that somewhere else or add something else to the fund balance restricted lines for another category. So just to keep that in mind, and that's just one example of what we can do.
But we could also do that with the fund balance.
That's, that's, you're saying that if it's assigned with fund balance, if it's in a restricted account, you can't do that. So what he's saying is if you move it to the fund balance and it's assigned, then yes, you have the flexibility.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions here?
Just to, you know, the custodial thing again is a big increase over here. I know we talked about that, but.
Just to clarify, we did not negotiate that?
No, I know.
I know, I would like to clarify for the people that our custodial contract is not negotiated with us, it's negotiated with the company. And so we had absolutely no control over those percentage increases when they happened. That was a surprise to us, which was fun.
And what year did we switch to a company?
Twenty twelve.
A long time.
Oh, yeah, two thousand eight. Yeah, two thousand eight-ish.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Right, it was.
That's when the contract, the contract that we're under right now was written in twenty twelve. I went to ABM when I got here and said, hey, can I see a current contract? Because all I have is this one from twenty twelve. And they said, that's it.
One.
I think, I think, Chris, if you're amenable to it, I think it would be at some point good to have a conversation about what your opinion is on, you know, what your professional judgment is on.
I have started to prepare my impressions of their operational efficiencies or lack thereof. And I'll have that for Dr. Duvall probably by the end of this week.
Yeah, I think that's great, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on this one? Fire and safety services?
That is fire alarms, the maintenance thereof, the testing.
It's a hundred thousand dollars?
It's, that is, that, like elevators, are a standalone industry that you, man, you're gonna pay through the nose every time you want to call them. It's, that is, that, like elevators, are a standalone industry that you, man, you're gonna pay through the nose every time you wanna call them in.
Got it, thank you.
That's a toughie, yeah, and there's very little, because the state's involved on that level. You have to do what the state says from a fire, uh, detection, alarms, uh, standpoint.
Any questions on the next page? For trees?
I started saying we have extra tree work.
I'm sorry?
Is that why there's an increase?
There's one whole line that's just trees.
Yeah, just for trees, so is.
Six thousand dollars, we're, we're, we're gonna chop down some trees. I know that's like three trees, based on my personal experience.
All right, yeah, you're probably right.
We have a lot of work that has to be.
We have a host of tree concerns, um, so we're gonna have to, uh, find what our most serious concerns are and, and divvy that money up accordingly. Uh, in two weeks, we're about to spend two thousand dollars to remove a very large tree at the high school. Uh, the one that abuts Anna Quinn Tucket Road. Thank you, um, that sits right inside the, uh, teacher's lot. It's dropped a number of very large branches, uh, on vehicles in the past, and we're lucky it hasn't, you know, hurt anybody to this point, so. Uh, we're gonna be bringing that tree down for safety-related reasons. And now, we're gonna, the space that it takes up in the parking lot, actually, um, we're gonna ask the town to use their heavy equipment to remove the dirt on which that
You're gonna add parking spot?
Six of them, yeah, six out of the.
Really?
Yeah.
One extra democracy project.
Can I just point, Erin, can I just point out one thing, just, um, on the property and liability insurance, so I did factor in an increase, but I would like to point out that, um, last year, as you all know, I had to come to you because they did a reevaluation for us, so our fiscal twenty-five number came in significantly, significantly higher than we budgeted for. But we were okay because we had an offset with our workers' comp, so it almost dollar-for-dollar balanced out. Um, I did factor in a standard five percent increase, but the hope is that it's going to come in lower, because we before we had our reevaluation last year, but.
And they do those every couple of years.
It's every couple of years, yes, and we had ours that like, they evaluate the buildings and all the things that go with it, so the, the hope is we might have a savings there.
Until our. But we'll deal with that. Uh, Transportation?
Also?
Thanks, Chris. Michelle, I'm sorry, I thought we should have bumped that up for you, I just realized, like, that you weren't just saying uppermost. So my apologies, I should have noticed that and moved them up, save, save to Chris as well, Chaz, you have to save, no matter what. Questions about Transportation?
My one question was, I see you added summer school, thank you.
Yes.
I just, I, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we ran a more scaled-back version of summer school this year than we have in past years. In terms of who.
That's a Jody question.
Offered it to, I remember Rob saying that we were doing more after-school, so there were less students that it got extended to.
Just the middle school.
Just the middle, yeah, yeah.
Just, well, okay, so.
It's grade six and seven.
My question is, is that, is this year's cost indicative of what, like, next year's programming will look like?
So, in, in terms of summer school, so we, um, I asked Jody to give me what she anticipated were the dates and how many buses we were gonna need, and then relayed that to Michelle, who then priced this out, so the number that we're looking at is what we anticipate the needs being for the, the actual program, the students that are there. It's, it is slightly higher than what it was that was in SR, not significantly, I wanna say that it was closer to thirty thousand dollars of what was paid for in SR.
Okay, okay.
So I do think that the program is gonna be larger.
Okay, so it's not based on like last year's program, okay, okay, that was my question.
Any other questions regarding this page?
And the other, like, the, the hardware and the software, that's the cameras that we were talking about?
Yes. And also the, the upgrade to the first trans off one that we now have to migrate to the cloud-based version.
We bought a vehicle, leased a vehicle, we did something. Two, there were two, yes.
We bought a best, we bought it in and we leased it to vehicles.
Yes. That.
Yes, yes.
Cause it was over a couple of years, I remember that.
Yep, so that, that is factored in, but once it officially, we have all the documents, this may change, because I thought it seemed a little conservative, I'm gonna be honest, so, um, but I think it will be offset in how some of the costs are gonna be allocated in other areas, because they're new, so we can reduce it in other areas, so I'm comfortable with where that's gonna be falling. Chris, correct?
Yep.
Is this where my question about the mechanics would be, about the, they've changed, no, okay, so, I, I guess my question was, again, you said that we've changed and as a result, the pricing has increased, so did we have to change, like, did we not?
The person that we typically use.
The mechanic that we had, he closed his shop.
Okay.
So, and he was a private mechanic, so mechanic, so now we have to use, um, a company within North Kingston.
Okay.
Um, for fleet and vehicle insurance, it's even funded, but we're adding more buses to the fleet, so wouldn't it go up?
No, believe it or not, when I, I, it, it offset because we have older vehicles that things are dropping off.
Yeah, like the way.
The newer vehicles are coming in less because there's less liability, so it kind of evened out.
Great.
Oddly.
And the statewide increase is cause of statewide, not because of the number of, like, students that we're utilizing it for?
Correct, so that was the number I was mentioning earlier, where we budgeted four hundred and thirty thousand and it came in at, what, five hundred and twenty?
Five hundred and twenty, and there's a projection for the increase as of right now.
So that is the buses, bus contracts statewide, um, special education and then parochial underneath it. So I felt it was more comfortable to budget based on what our actual is this year and project that more than likely, we're gonna be at the same level, um, rather than looking at fiscal twenty-four or even the budget for twenty-five, I just don't think it was accurate. Now, the unfortunate thing with the projections from statewide is we don't get them until after our budget is at least approved on our level.
We received have been, um, late May last year, the projections.
So we're well past our cycle for, for any changes.
So we think we're gonna, I know, like, it's, I'm assuming it's the same thing, the forty-five thousand dollars that we approved for last year, and we've only expended, in theory, sixteen thousand. We are anticipating it's gonna be more than forty-five thousand based on your projections?
Yes.
The parochial, that's what it costs us to transport students to, like, charter schools and things?
So that's private schools.
No, that's, yeah, that's, that's different. We don't, we don't have any chuck. Yeah, so we had the numbers, but we didn't have the exact breakdown of the costs, so we'll have that at the next meeting, but we don't transport any, to any charter schools, we transport to, um,
A Kendrickan and.
Uh, not Kendrickan.
No?
Well, that's, so there's, there's two, so there's parochial and voc tech that fall under our bus contracting, and then there's also ones that fall under statewide.
Oh, okay. Cool.
So they're two places.
Yep, any questions on this one?
But that's not in the budget yet, or it is?
No, it is, it is, it is.
Okay.
I have a counterpoint.
Next page, Athletics.
So the, the money like in the enterprise funds from like gate receipts and things like that, how, does that come back into the Athletics Department budget?
So it doesn't come in, it stays in its own fund because it has to be self-sustaining, so it can be used for separate purchases, so, um, the only part that will come back into the overall budget is the fifteen percent that will come in for capital reserves, and that money is reserved to be used by Athletics, so whatever capital projects may need to be done. Um, and that's housed, you'll see that, that's actually a line item on our fund balance sheet. But those gate receipts or for, um, the different sports camps that they might have, their intent is to be used specifically exclusive of items that are in the general fund, so if there are additional items, like I think one year they bought wrestling mats that were not
Michelle, thank you.
budgeted for that weren't there, but were needed, um, and it's, the, the rules around how they are, they have to come to school committee, it has to be an approved use of those funds, so they can't just access them, use them, and then things like the sports camps, those enterprise funds have to be used for that camp.
For that camp.
For the following year, so if there's any revenue that they've received, that has to get carried over and be used exclusively, exclusively for that the next year.
Assuming after they pay people and stuff.
So like, on here where we have like equipment, like a thirty thousand dollar budget, that could not come out of gate receipts?
It could, it could, with the school committee's approval.
Okay.
So these, if we're looking at basic equipment that they have, I'm going to go with the majority of that line item. Line item is probably football helmets, because we have to send them in every year and they have to be, um, looked at and proved, and if we have to buy new ones, we are required to buy new ones. So that is a, that's a big expense that happens every year. I would hate to supplant the budget and take that out, because they are required every year, and if you don't have the gate receipts to support that, then how do you pay for these necessary items? But absolutely, if the school committee felt that it was appropriate to use those funds, you could, you can allocate that to them.
So it's, is it, one of these line items is like all that money, is it saying it's actually in our budget or it's just separate?
It's not, it's separate.
And can, and it can, is it only the high school or can the middle school?
It's Athletics for the district, so it's district-wide.
What is the big jump, um, in tech software?
So that is just a, a jump as represented in this budget model, so that's the Huddle software that was in the budget last year, but it was, um, under IT. And so we've taken it out of IT and we've put it here so that we can see it, it can be represented, especially since it's been a topic at other.
Is that an annual cost?
It is.
Is that the one where they watch video?
Yes. It is, it's, um, twelve.
Does that also include like the, um, sports app too, that all the?
Yeah, it's, it's not the complete seventeen thousand, I think three thousand of that is the R-School software app, the scheduling app, I believe. Is that, or is that in your budget?
The scheduling app is ours, cause that's district-wide.
But the, but what about this, the?
Oh, this is the, this is the mobile app.
Sports U, that we're saying the sports U that all the.
Yeah, the mobile app, that's right. Not, not sports U, we don't have sports U, it's R-School's U, but it's through the, it's, our schools does the scheduling, but then our school also does the app that we're using, but we're not going to use that app for the future, we're looking for something different.
But, but.
The one we just got working?
It's, it's.
Did we, did we get it working?
That's the one where it's good.
Um.
We, we had trouble with it, but we wanted to keep those funds, so obviously we need to replace it with something.
It doesn't do exactly what we, it doesn't do exactly what we wanted to and what it should be doing, so we are going with something different.
I do have one more quick question about the big jump in, and granted, this was from last year's budget, started in last year's budget, but what was the big jump in professional or, I'm assuming, organization fees?
Yeah, I have that question.
So those are our, those are our officials?
From thirty-eight hundred dollars to twenty-three thousand?
It's, it's a little misleading, so this is one where you have to look at, um, the, the way it was budgeted before, it was separated out, so they had officials and then they would have it as a middle school, a high school, and we've just cut, it's now combined, it's all housed in one thing with the Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League, so it's all one. So we had those fees before, they were just broken up differently, but there was also an increase on top of that.
And isn't it, you took, cause middle school wasn't part, and just throw it out and just.
Exactly, and now it is, so it's all, it's all one.
Yep.
And I can show you that breakout, if you'd like it, of how it was prior and what it is now.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this one? Wait, how is, oh, so that's personal org fee, you said it's for officials.
I need to find it.
But then there's an official line as well. So is it just like to be part of that organization, is that how much it costs?
So, so there's one fee that we pay that's part of Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic, that's now all rolled up into one, and then we have the one where we, they allocate out and we pay quarterly on what our officials are, so they place the officials and that's what actually pays for the officials.
Took eighty thousand dollars?
Is, well, it's, it's now all under one.
Can you break it down for us?
Yes, I absolutely, that's, it's all, it's all under one, and I'm sure Dave could explain it significantly better than I am doing right now, um, but.
He's up here.
So I, I can, I have the breakdown, he did provide it.
Okay.
Out in that way.
We have five minutes left, um, and we have lots of pages left, so are there specific questions that people wanna ask this evening, obviously you can always email, um, Dr. Duvva and Leslie, but is there anything specific that like, might be better verbally expressed?
Yeah, you have, anyone have questions that weren't answered yet?
I, I can, I can make like a general comment, if we're looking at the last slew of pages, which are the school-level pages, I'm sure you've all noticed that, that we need a very, um, concerted effort to keep those budgets level, but still maintaining everything that the school and the administrators at the school said that they needed. So even though it looks like there is not a lot of increases in many areas, that was, you know, in conversations with them, they are all confident that their needs are being met based on those budgets and based on their spend.
For things like, like we were hearing, and again, this is student voice and not, but like they were, maybe the spring Democracy Day, students were talking to us about art supplies and running out of art supplies towards, towards the end of the year and things like that, um, and it's like a little reflected there, maybe like a thousand three fifty, but I remember that was like a big, yeah, it was a big concern.
At the high school level, they were running out of supplies?
Yeah, it was two different Democracy Day.
Cryo, she'll like, it was pretty bad, yeah.
See, like, so those are the things that don't, like, they get brought up at Democracy.
Yep.
But they don't get brought to the attention through like budget concerns or supply, so I'm, I'm, I wanna go back.
Yeah, there's a disconnect there, yeah.
What, what's really going on?
Like, the teachers aren't saying that, which.
Or it's not coming from the teacher, building level administrator to us, so I'm not sure that breakdown is or what is actually.
And again, it was an anecdotal thing, but I remember very specifically.
And I will, specifically to last year, I think it's important to note out, so when I first came on board, I put a spending freeze, a hard spending freeze, because I wanted to.
You're the reason for the no freeze.
It's all my, I, I, I will, I'll take ownership of it, I really wanted to get a handle on the district finances and where we are, and so I would say.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. You could have just spent a moment in time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, in April, I put a hard stop on any spending, which I think this district too is used to going right up to the last minute, and I made a hard stop, so that could have contributed to it.
No, I'm not, I'm joking, but I'm not joking, like, that could make sense, and why a teacher might say to a student, no, I can't buy that right now, because that was happening, so.
And then, no.
At least the main cryo.
I have, I denied them crying.
But to your point, Kenny, I, I think it's really important, and I don't know how to kind of get this across, that, um, you know, there's a big difference about saying you need stuff, but then actually just trying to advocate that through the proper channels. Um, I, I'm a big supporter of funding supplies, the basic supplies.
I didn't know that.
But, I mean, I just heard that recently, you know, but I, I also say to people, but that you have to get it to the, through the proper channels, you can't just come to me.
I'm actually emailing some people right now, just to get, it's like, I do wanna get clarified and I have this conversation, like, what is really going on?
I guarantee.
But I think to Megan's point, like, for a long time in this district, people would ask for things and they were told, no, don't you even ask me for it.
Well, and that came up, I will tell you, that came up in another conversation, when we were at one of the schools going through, um, it was at DMS, when we were doing some work around the new building and capital improvement and stuff, and we met with a representative group of teachers, and they were saying stuff like, oh, yeah, I had to go to Home Depot and buy myself a whiteboard, I'm like, but that's not the way it should be happening. And we need to, for future, I mean, it can't happen this year, but we, we need to look at a cycle of, like, how are we making sure that we are replenishing furnishings in classrooms?
But I think also like creating the environment.
So teachers aren't having to beat up themselves. And why was that never in the past, something that was put out there as a move?
Right, cause I think people were afraid, and I think now, like, you may not get it, but you should ask for it.
Or even at the, or even at administrative, like, administrative, why aren't we budgeting for that?
Yeah.
And I did, that was, I was very clear, and I mentioned this in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, that when I met with the administrators, I said, tell me what you need, so their budget document wasn't just, here's your numbers, fill in the, it was, let's talk about the number of students you have and what you typically buy for art, and, and we detailed that all out and we did it by student, so that depending on your, the size of your school, you were getting a budget that was appropriate, and then also what are your departmental issues that you wouldn't normally tell people, like, I wanted them, and they were very thoughtful.
How could nothing increase though? Like, I get that we're, because we're doing a zero-based budget, right, so in theory, something should change.
So they were very thoughtful about it, and I think what a lot of them expressed, and I, I appreciate their honesty in it, is that we were sometimes just budgeting and saying, okay, well, this is what my materials and expenses were this year, and now we're gonna add this percent, and instead, we went line by line and we looked at, like, what are you actually spending?
Yeah.
Like, and, and does this spend, so we look at your actual from the year before, do you really need to increase it three percent? Or is the budget that we're at sufficient, cause you didn't reach that budget the last two years? And that's how we went through it, and in some areas, we absolutely increased it, so there were PE supplies at the middle school that are like, they need, they absolutely have, we increased those lines. There were, you know, uniforms and different things that fell under Athletics, but we, we did look at that, and when they needed it, it's included. But if they could, could look at how to reallocate what they have to better use their dollars, they did.
All right, so I think for, in the interest of time, we, so we got through up to the school-level budgets, and so if people wanna email, um, Ken and Leslie, the questions regarding, if there's anything you have questions on for each of the different schools and what's there, um, please do that as soon as possible, so that Leslie has time to kind of digest it and then come back to us next week. And then at the very end, no, that's it, it just goes for there, and then you do have more information, um, to Leslie's point, at the end of the spreadsheet, um, that gives some additional information as well, is there anything kind of big picture that the school committee would like to see for next week?
Just to follow up on the stuff that I'd already asked for about the charter schools enrollment and, um, like where they're going, and my other question was, like, Jamestown, we're budgeting based on something, but we haven't actually entered into negotiations yet, so like, what is that based on, you know, those type of?
And, and I can just quickly answer that too, so I'm basing it on the, the current contract that we have. Um and I actually looked at our actuals and what it's coming in at, and I based it on the number of anticipated students. So I actually brought it down.
But to Jen's point, we, and we can't talk about, but we do have a contract, we have a contract.
Right, so, so I had to, so I ba, just like I did in other areas, I based it off of the existing contract that we have right now, so that if, for whatever reason, we're just, we, we carry it forward.
And as the enrollment drops.
But obviously, that, that's subject to change based on.
In Jamestown, it's also gonna decrease the number of students, and that is what we've seen in the past superintendent, seeing a decline.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, like, I think we're, like, straight line budgeting that, like, I just.
It's actually, I reduced it.
Okay.
From, from what the budget is now, I based it more on our actuals, so it's, it's actually a reduction.
Right, any other questions today?
Is that renegotiated this year?
It's supposed to be right now.
Yeah, we do.
Great, we appreciate our neighbors to the west east.
I just wanna thank Leslie publicly for everybody, like, I cannot, I told you this eighteen thousand time, it was like such a difference this year.
Yeah, but she seems a very pretty doctor. Yeah, great.
That's why I brought this.
All right, um I.
If I wasn't red before, I'm going to.
You deserve it.
So we got.
I don't know how to turn it off.
I know it doesn't turn off, it doesn't, eventually it does, but you can't turn it off. Um so we got through, so we did not get to, at our next meeting, we'll have to. Um I have kids, I can talk over that. Presentations of, uh, we'll do the presentations of um the capital and the enterprise, like, that information is more information that comes along with this. And then we can always um circle back out of questions, and then, you know, we'll just start having some conversations about, this is the proposed budget, but then what are we going to adopt and put forward to the town council?
So we have, as of next week, listed on a calendar as a work, a budget work session. Is it, or is it not a budget work session, or is it a business meeting?
Um, do you want to pull up my budget calendar?
It was sent out as a budget workshop.
Yeah, but what is it on the school committee calendar? Oh, yeah, no, next week might be budget workshop again, maybe?
Yes, I have the fourth.
And then the eleventh is a school committee meeting, so we're making four weeks in a row, that's.
Sure, buddy.
Five, seven in a row, thank you for keeping track.
And we could, we could cancel one if we believe something's not, but I would need next week to finish this.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that sounds pretty good, uh, okay. Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll, is it next week? All right, can I get a motion um to adjourn?
So moved.
Second move.
Okay, I'll have some favor, all right, thank you.